8th of April 2020 at 6:02pm. Councillors, before we begin tonight, I'd like to have a minute's silence for Mrs Carmen Burton, a member of the Randwick community and also the manager for Randwick Mills on Wheels for a very long time, and she'll be surely missed. And I'd also like to have a minute's silence for Norman Nob Hill. He was a credit to the Randwick community and also largely will be missed member of the Coogee Surf Lifesodding Club. So I'd just like to start a minute's silence from now before we begin. Thank you, councillors.
Mr Mayor, before you continue, can you hear me?
Yes.
Could we remember the ANZACs that we lost on, you know, we had remembrance of our ANZAC Day not so long ago, but sadly, everything was different. Could we spend a minute and relive or dedicate in a minute to remember those brave men and women that served at Gallipoli and all the war since, please?
Okay, thank you, councillor D'Souza. I'll just set my timer. So, thank you. We'll just have a minute's silence for commemoration of ANZAC Day. Thank you, councillors. Thank you councillor D'Souza. Now, we are in uncharted waters. So before the evening begins, I'd just like to go through some housekeeping. At our very first virtual meeting, I will endeavour to ensure that everyone has the opportunity to participate in the debate. Be mindful that due to the virtual platform, the debate and questions will be different to a face-to-face meeting. When speaking, and this is probably one of the most important, when speaking, please clearly state your name prior to addressing the meeting. And I'll probably call a break approximately around 8:30pm. So thank you very much for that. Now, the prayer and the acknowledgement, just to make things flow for the evening, I'll just read those myself. So the prayer, Almighty God, we humbly beseech you to bestow your blessings upon the council and to direct and prosper our deliberations to the advancement of your glory and the true wealth for the people of Randwick and Australia. Amen. Acknowledgement of country. I would like to acknowledge that we're meeting on the land of the Bidgecall and Gatchcall peoples who occupy the Sydney coast, being the traditional owners. On behalf of Randwick City Council, I acknowledge and pay my respects to the elders both past and present and to the Aboriginal people in attendance today. Now councillors, I'd go to apologies and granting of leave of absences. I have one myself, that Anthony councillor Andrews will be here probably in about 15 minutes. Does anyone else have any other mentions? I think we're all here then. So do I have a mover and a second?
I move. Councillor Shuri, I move.
Councillor Shuri's moving it. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Councillor Hamilton.
Councillor Hamilton, second it. All those in favour?
Aye.
Aye.
All those against, I declare that carried. Now, the confirmation of the minutes. Can someone please remove the minutes of the 24th of March 2020? Councillor Venus has moved it. Do I have a second? Councillor Luxford, I have a second.
Hey, how's it going?
Councillor Luxford seconded it.
I'm in a council meeting. This is the first council meeting ever.
Councillor Hamilton, we're hearing you. Okay. All those in favour say aye.
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 All those against, I declare that carried. Declarations of pecuniary and non-pecuniary interests, the general manager will read those out.
Mr Mayor, I have one declaration of interest from councillor Nielsen, who has declared a non-significant non-pecuniary interest in item NM2820 on the basis that she was formerly a member of the MEAA Journalist Union. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam GM. Are there any other pecuniary and non-pecuniary interests off the floor?
Yes.
Can I have that again? Is that councillor Andrews? No.
Councillor Roberts.
Roberts, sorry.
Yeah, and it is exactly the same as councillor Nielsen. I'm also a former member of MEAA, so for consistency, I suppose I better declare it as well.
Okay, thank you. Any further declarations? So now, now we move to addresses of the council by the members of the public. And I'd just like to, we have a new privacy warning obviously and announcement to the speakers because we are live, live streaming this event. So we have five speakers tonight. And I'd wish to advise that this meeting is being livestreamed using an audiovisual link in accordance with section 747A of the Local Government Act. I would like to remind all councillors that they continue to oblige to disclose appropriately managed conflicts of interest that they may have in matters that have been considered at this meeting. Councillors continue to be obliged to remove themselves from consideration of matters in which they have a pecuniary or significant non-pecuniary conflict of interest. Councillors continue to be obliged to protect any confidential information considered at the meeting. During the closed session part of the meeting, councillors should ensure that they participate in the meeting in a location where it cannot be seen or heard by anyone else. To the speakers tonight, the public forum section of the meeting is also being livestreamed using audiovisual link to allow submissions to be made to councillors. All members of the public addressing tonight's meeting have a maximum of three minutes in which to put their case forward. Presenters will be stopped at the three minutes mark has expired and you will be granted an extra minute. Councillors may ask questions of presenters at the end of each public session. So the first speaker we have tonight is on behalf of MM13/20, Financial Support for the Delhi Women Children's Centre during the pandemic. And it's Mrs, Ms Vicky Johnston. Do we have Ms Johnston there?
Yep.
Miss Johnston? Okay, cool. Cool. Ms, oh, sorry, go ahead. Ms Johnston, you can speak now.
Okay, thank you, Mr Mayor. I really appreciate being offered this opportunity this evening. As councillors would know from the report I've sent through further to being notified about the mayoral minute this evening, we've experienced a significant spike in our referrals to our service since COVID began. And we've also noted an increase in the complexity in cases that we're receiving, which is taking up a lot more time for our councillors than it used to pre-COVID. We're finding that at the moment, we've got around about a three week wait for an initial appointment with one of our councillors, which is not therapeutically ideal for our clients, particularly people that are in crisis under the COVID situation that we're all finding ourselves in. I'm also really concerned about the potential for burnout with our councillors because we're all quite passionate about the work that we do and keenly trying to respond to clients as urgently as we can. And with the, that combined with the increase in demand is really taking a toll on our staff. Because we don't want to turn people away when they're in crisis and when they're in need. So I believe that my case has been pretty well stated in the report that I've submitted. So I'd just like to thank the mayor for putting forward this proposal in the mayoral minute this evening. We're very grateful for your support. And we're also very grateful for the support of council in general of our service and our community and the clients who we serve. Sorry, Mr Mayor, I can't hear you.
Sorry, that's it. Can you hear me now? Yeah, sorry, Ms Johnston. Would you like to take a few questions from the other councillors?
Sure, if anyone has any questions, I'm very happy to take them.
Okay. Councillors, councillor Vich, I can see your finger up, the rest you can't see.
Hi, thanks for coming into the meeting. What would, what sort of increased ability would a funding increase, what sort of difference would that make to your, to your service and to the women and children, you know, who are generally your clients or future clients?
Well, the, the numbers that we put before you would mean that we could provide service depending on the needs of each individual, but we could accommodate an additional 25 to 50 clients with the budget that we put to council. We, yeah, we're aiming to see at least an additional 10 clients or so a fortnight with that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor D'Souza?
I'm sorry councillor, I can't hear you.
No, that's because I was muted. Thank you, Vicky. Nice to see you again. Tell me, how much is the federal and state member contributing to this project?
We're still waiting on the answer to that councillor. I have written to all of those members, particularly since the Prime Minister made the announcement of the investment in domestic violence services at the federal level. I've been given to understand that around 32 million of that has been filtered down to the states. But we are awaiting advice on how that's going to be distributed. We have been asked by our funding organisation, which is the Department of Communities and Justice, various questions about current demand and our current capacity and what issues we're observing. But we haven't heard anything further from them since they've asked us for that information.
A secondary question, so in the past though, how much have they contributed to your budgets?
We're primarily...
You don't have to give me a figure, you can give me a rough idea.
We're primarily funded by the Department of Communities and Justice, but it doesn't sufficiently enable us to meet the demand for our services. So we've been actively fundraising since about 2016 and we would apply for at least 20 small grants each year. And that includes through Randwick Council and club grants to try and supplement our core funding so that we can try to meet demand.
And one more question, Vicky. So you look after ladies in both the Randwick Local Government area and the Botany Local Government area, am I right?
Yes, that's correct. We're not geographically restricted. But generally speaking, our service captures people in what is now the Bayside East, as we refer to it, local government area and the Randwick Local Government area. And we operate through four different locations within those two local government areas at the moment.
And has the Bayside Council given you any?
No, we have been in discussions with them, but there's been no offer of any support at the moment.
Thank you very much. Sorry, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor D'Souza. Any other questions, councillors? Okay, thank you very much, Ms Johnson. And it's a great work you do down at the Delhi. Thank you very much for all your support.
Thank you.
Now, councillors.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillors, now we, we move to GM2/20, Clevelly Childcare Incorporated, request for financial assistance. And it's Ms Nicole Kidd. Sorry, sorry, Ms Kidd has apparently dropped out. So I'll move, we'll bring her back, but I'll move to CS14/20, Taste of Coogee Festival and the location, Mrs Lucy Bloom, who is the deputy chair of the Coogee Chamber of Commerce.
Mr Mayor, councillor Andrews here, just confirming that I'm now at the meeting.
Councillor Andrews.
Hello.
Are you there, Ms Bloom?
Yes, I am.
Oh, here he comes.
Hi, how you doing?
Sorry, thank you. That's fine now. Thank you. Sorry. We've got three minutes, Ms Bloom. Thank you very much.
Okay, good. The council report on the location of the Taste of Coogee and its inclusion for discussion at this meeting tonight was not communicated to the chamber, a major stakeholder. This has led us to believe that there is a council-led campaign to obstruct this event. All while council seems to be holding hands exclusively with men's sport. I have five questions I expect to be answered on behalf of the community and the chamber. One, why was the president of the chamber told off the record by a Randwick councillor that if we make the cricketers happy, this will all go away? Why? Question two, why do you think it is that the cricketers have been happy with the Taste of Coogee, having played the cricket at this venue while the chamber was giving the club a donation of $10,000 a year? And when this had to cease due to council fees of $34,000, the cricket club's support was suddenly withdrawn. Does this mean that council is suggesting we need to re-establish our donation to the Randy Peets? Question three, why has council continued to entertain ludicrous excuses regarding the Taste of Coogee's impact on Coogee Oval? Including but not limited to, A, paddle pop sticks appearing on the grass at Christmas time, explained on Taste of Coogee three months earlier. B, damage to the edges of the grass appears to be a-okay for the rugby lads and their bleachers, their trucks which bring in the bleachers, but not for Taste of Coogee. And C, injury to cricketers is a sudden late entry in the race of ridiculousness to obstruct this public event. This is a last-ditch effort to make famous cricketers more important than the rest of the community, rather than an actual proven and valid health concern. My fourth question, it has been suggested that Taste of Coogee moved to Trennery Reserve. Please explain why Randwick Council has never, ever, in the history of ludicrous suggestions, ever held a major event there? There are millions of reasons why, and I emailed the top 10 to all councillors today. And my last question, question five, why does an event with an excellent track record for leaving the grounds in perfect condition and paying for the privilege have a spectacular uphill battle with council every single year? Is it because it is so successful that you're embarrassed that this is a chamber event, not a council event? Well, you should be. Instead of supporting events that are thriving, in 2019, council sabotaged the Coogee Family Fund Day with a council-run gift fair three weeks earlier. The chamber event could not compete with council's $500 a day roadside signage and undercutting stall rates. Class act Randwick Council, but why? That event had been running for 25 years and never again. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms Bloom. Councillors, are there any questions for Ms Bloom?
Yes, councillor Roberts.
Councillor Roberts, go ahead.
Can I just ask, do you think it's reasonable or unreasonable for certain stakeholders in Coogee to have a mortgage on Coogee Oval? Or do you think all the stakeholders should share Coogee Oval? And do you think if they shared Coogee Oval, do you think it could be done in a functional way?
Coogee Oval, the property is, belongs to the public. So if you're asking me if I think that property should be shared with the public, the obvious answer is yes.
Yes, and specifically, you think it should be shared with all stakeholders, including the chamber, to do an event that is clearly successful? And it could be shared with other users such as the clubs, the sports clubs. Surely we can find a solution where everyone can share Coogee Oval?
I would have thought so, yes. It shouldn't be exclusively used for men's sport, absolutely not. There should be a solution where all stakeholders have access to that property, yes.
Now, if the event was held down at Trennery, are there risks to the success of the event? And how, what effect would that have on local businesses? Would, would, would the crowds be even aware of where it is? And if they do make it there, would they be, would they spill over back to the Coogee Town Centre to support the chamber, which, which is the whole point of the event, I believe?
Very good questions. It's not down at Trennery, it is up. All uphill and a long way from the Coogee Town Centre. We did some marketability feasibility from our end regarding Trennery Reserve, and 100% of respondents did not know where it was. So it certainly has a low profile. The location is so far from the town centre, there would be absolutely no opportunity for flow over, flow-on-effect to Coogee businesses. In the past, the flow-on-effect has, has made Coogee Bay Road very busy that weekend. And that supports the night-time economy, which is one of council's strategies. The location's really exposed, it's very windy. The residents are not accustomed to an event like that with sound systems and a large scale. So I think that would cause a problem. Very low visibility of that patch of grass, nobody knows it's there. The brilliant thing about having it on the oval is people come to the beach for the day and go, whoa, there's a massive food and wine festival. Or they go to the beach and then they come over to the festival. There are so many problems with that.
Okay, can I, councillor Hamilton, I think's got a question?
I have a follow-up question.
Oh, sorry.
Do you mind councillor Roberts, so I move on to councillor Hamilton, please?
Okay, if you'd come back to me, that'd be great.
Yep, sure, okay.
I'll be quick. Thanks, Ms Bloom. My question is around the ability for patrons of the Taste of Coogee to frequent the restaurants in the immediate vicinity. How, how realistic do you think it would be for people attending Taste of Coogee at Trennery Reserve, when it, when it closes and the band plays in the last minute at 6pm? How realistic do you think it would be for them to head off to Coogee, to the restaurants, to have their dinner after they've just had lunch and drinks?
Oh, look, I think it would be less realistic than if it were at Coogee Oval, where it's just one street over. I mean, people would be going back to their cars, they'd have to go to public transport to get home from Trennery. But it's, it's pretty obvious that there would be much less flow-on-effect to Coogee Bay Road, to the town centre. If it's held on a piece of grass which is in the town centre, than one that is over half a kilometre up a big hill, in a, on a patch of grass nobody really knows about. So I think the flow-on-effect would be radically reduced. It would be a lot more difficult to market this event because people don't know where it is. And that marketability will make it very, very difficult for this event to run in the, in the black.
Councillor Roberts, your follow-up question?
Thank you. Could you just describe the difference in public transport? I believe there's a, there's a public transport interchange right next to Coogee Oval. And could you compare that to Trennery and, and the potential negative effects that could have on the elderly and disabled and, and people without a car?
Absolutely. Look, the reserve is not easily accessed by public transport. You would have to come into Coogee, take a long hard look at Coogee Oval, where, where we weren't holding the event, and hike it half a kilometre up the hill to Trennery Reserve. And that would exclude the elderly, the disabled, because there is so little parking in the streets. There's no way you can provide the kind of parking that you can here. The council has made sure is available right here around the oval. So the disabled and, and the elderly would be excluded from this event. People with prams and stacks of kids tend to have to go by car. So the lack of parking is going to exclude families. And then when, now I'm on families, we would have to fence that whole property, which would make it, it would be too expensive to do, whereas Coogee Oval's already fenced and, and secure.
Any other councillors, any?
I have a question, Mr Mayor.
Councillor D'Souza?
Ms Kidd, you must have been kidding when you were talking about the way council events or gave me the impression that we were envious of the success of your event. Is that what you...
No, not envious, embarrassed.
Embarrassed. Well, I tell you, you have heard of Coogee Sparkles, I'm sure, and our carols by candlelight. We have over 20,000 people attend these functions. Surely, that speaks for itself. But my question to you is, could you, you've talked about men's, but Coogee Oval is very sacred to those of us that follow the sport. Now, we entertained the idea and allowed the chamber to have this event. But my, I should get to the question. My question is, Trennery Reserve may, in your view, be distant from where you want it, but we have carols for our Salvation Army group at Grant Reserve, which is next door. It isn't difficult for people to get to. So in saying that, you're, why do you really, do you really, really believe if your event is so successful, it will, it will have the momentum to attract people to Trennery Reserve? And at the same time, allow the beach and the areas around there to be used by the public who use the car spaces that are there, rather than get it monopolised by people attending this event?
So what's the question?
My question was, you spoke so, of such a successful event and marketing, et cetera. Why are you then afraid to go to a new position, which really has been used, or the adjacent reserve, Grant Reserve, has been used for activities of this nature? Why, I mean, you do, I understand it may be economic reasons, but the public, Coogee Oval, the last time it was used by, for this activity, and I wasn't in favour of it when I was the mayor, but when it was used, the oval was left in pretty poor condition.
That's complete rubbish. Let me just answer your actual question before we go on to the next thing. So you mentioned Sparkles.
Ms Bloom, so just in the interest of getting the, I'll let you answer it, I'm not trying to interrupt you, sorry. But if you can keep your, if the, can I just remind councillors if they can keep their questions short, and if you can keep your questions short, that way we'll get through the evening at some stage before midnight. Thank you.
I think I got the question was, why am I afraid? I'm afraid to run an event of this magnitude, which has never been run up there. Nothing like this. 10,000 people per day are at this event, which is open from 10:00 in the morning till 8:00 at night and 6:00 at night the following day. That's a lot of people in one place for a long time. It has never been done there. I'm afraid because I don't want little kids having to, I don't want to have to fence it so that little kids are safe. That's already in place on Coogee Oval. Why am I afraid? The reserve is an alcohol-prohibited zone. Why am I afraid? The reserve is an alcohol prohibited zone. So many of our, um, our storeholders sell alcohol. It's one of the most, uh, successful parts of the event, is the wine tasting. And we have wineries and a Coogee Wine Bar wants to book. We have so many businesses who do great business on wine and booze. I'm afraid because it is an alcohol prohibited zone. I'm afraid because it has such low visibility. Only locals go to the Coogee carols, or the carols that are, have been up on that patch of grass. Only locals go to that, and they walk from the streets around. The people who come to Taste of Coogee come from all over Sydney. It is such a landmark event, we collect their postcode, they're from everywhere. They don't come because they wander down with their kids, they come because this is a landmark event. Uh, I'm afraid because it's incredibly windy and dangerous place to hold an event of this magnitude with tents and with marquees, it would be a ridiculous, dangerous thing to do. And I'm afraid that council would even suggest such a ridiculous venue.
Thank you, Ms Bloom. I, I, oh, thank you for that. Um, we're gonna move on to, back to G M two slash twenty. Uh, the Clough Valley Childcare Incorporated, request for financial assistance. I think Ms Kidd is back on board. Um, Ms Kidd, you have three minutes.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor Said and councillors, thank you for this opportunity to address council. I'm Nicole Kidd, I'm a member of, represent the Parent Management Committee. The Centre is grateful for the long-term partnership with council since nineteen eighty-five. We provide childcare mostly to families within the Randwick local government area, which is approximately three quarters of our enrolments. We care for and educate children from three months old through to five years old, including high priority enrolments. Importantly, we are currently supporting essential workers by caring for their children. We appreciate the recent detailed and diligent work carried out to restore our site. While the initial piece of bonded asbestos was found by a child digging during play, subsequent thorough investigation by council found large quantities of asbestos in a number of separate undisturbed locations, with over two hundred and fifty days removed. This indicates the extensive discovery of asbestos and latent issue with. The imprints as made and materials submitted for this evening's meeting, that the asbestos related to the erection of the shade sail. In fact, it did not, the asbestos was already there. And the widespread nature of the remediation undertaken and a sheer volume of waste removed supports this. We asked councillors to recognise that while the centre discovered this defect and brought it to council's attention, we did not cause the asbestos to be on the site and we cannot be held responsible for its existence and bear financial impact because of it. During the month we were closed, we could not charge fees to families as we could not provide service. We still had the ongoing expense of staff wages and other fixed expenses like electricity and gas. Our expected income for the period of closure was a hundred and thirty-six thousand, we received nothing. We took all reasonable steps to mitigate this loss, including discussions with council regarding suitable alternative operating premises. We're not for profit, our cash reserves have purposely been built up to undertake improvements and maintenance to the centre. Those reserves have been depleted because of the closure. We've got limited reserves to withstand, for just having this closure followed so quickly by Covid nineteen. And we now find ourselves in a very precarious financial position. We suffered loss of enrolments due to the asbestos closure. And together with the impacts of Covid, our income was down approximately forty-five percent in March twenty twenty relative to twenty nineteen. The grant requested from council will ensure we can get through the further disruption caused by Covid. We've also requested a twelve-month extension of the current agreement to allow the central council to focus on the current challenges with Covid and alleviate the pressure around this looming deadline. If council is not in a position to offer immediate financial assistance in the magnitude of our actual loss, we offer an alternative proposal for consideration which may better meet council's financial needs, being limited to the auditable cost of staff wages amounting to approximately seventy-seven thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars, and the difference to be credited towards future subsidised rent payable under new yet-to-arrive rent arrangements. Agreement to extend the currently for twelve months and will pay the legal costs associated with documenting that. We genuinely appreciate council's consideration of these requests and again, thank all of the councillors who have taken an interest in our centre and what it means to our local community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms Kidd. Would you be okay to take a few questions?
Sure, I am.
Uh, councillors, any questions for Ms Kidd? Oh, thank you. There's no questions for you. So I'll move on to N M twenty-eight slash twenty. Notice a motion from councillor Veach, celebrating press freedom and supporting press freedom for Australian journalists. Um, we have speaking Dr Lisa Johnson. You have three minutes. Yep, and you have three minutes. Thanks, Ms Johnson.
Thank you. So my name is Lisa Johnson, I'm a clinical psychologist and journalist and founding spokesperson for the group Doctors for Assange, which is a group of two hundred doctors and psychologists from around the world working to, uh, secure the humane treatment of Julian Assange, including in The Lancet. And I'd like to thank Randwick Council for taking the time to consider this important issue. Um, there's a strong case to be made that this is perhaps one of the most significant motions to come before any council on the subject of press freedom and citizens' fundamental democratic and human rights. I'm on the eve of World Press Freedom Day, an Australian journalist and Australian citizen is in prison as part of a historic press freedom test case. So for the first time ever, the U S Espionage Act is being applied to publishing activity. And importantly, that publishing activity has attracted one of Australia's most reputable and most, um, esteemed prizes for journalism, the Walkley Award for Most Outstanding Journalism in two thousand and ten. So if, if that prosecution is successful, the precedent that will be set is that journalism will be redefined as espionage. So it's a highly politicised case. It's being denounced by the world's leading press freedom groups, not just for its potential to criminalise journalism, but also for its extraterritoriality. And U S laws are being applied to a non-U S citizen in a foreign jurisdiction, and the protections of the U S constitution, the free speech protections, are being withheld. And even worse, an Australian citizen's fundamental human rights are being grossly violated in the process, including his human rights to health and life and his right to be free from torture. The U N Repertoire on Torture, Niels Melzer, has reported that Julian Assange is being psychologically tortured in Belmarsh Prison, uh, on top of a long history of prolonged psychological torture. And the International Bar Association, Human Rights Abuse, uh, Human Rights Association has, um, called Julian's treatment in Belmarsh Prison shocking and excessive, and including in Belmarsh Court, uh, and likened it to the Abergrave Prison scandal. So now Julian Assange is at imminent risk of death from coronavirus, which has entered Belmarsh Prison and begun killing prisoners. And he's medically vulnerable to the lethal effects of Covid nineteen because of his history of psychological torture, and also because of a long history of medical neglect and fragile health, including persistent respiratory issues. Nevertheless, despite hearing medical evidence of Julian Assange's vulnerability to coronavirus, last month, an emergency bail application was denied, um, which, you know, goes against internationally agreed guidelines for prisoner release. Julian Assange meets all the criteria for release, and it was against the advice of Amnesty International. And, you know, the, the effect is essentially to leave him for dead in prison over journalism. So the world's leading human rights and organisations and authorities in international law.
Oh, excuse me, Dr Johnson, that's, excuse me, Dr, it's the three minutes, but you, I'll grant you an extra minute to finish up.
Almost done. Thank you. Thank you. Almost done. Thanks. So they unequivocally denouncing his treatment and the extradition proceedings themselves, and many are calling for his urgent release. So if human rights are to mean anything, if press freedom is to mean anything, and if Australian citizenship is to mean anything, Australians, including the Randwick Council, really must stand with these world, leading world authorities in human rights and international law, and call for the humane treatment of Julian Assange, and at the very least, his release on bail. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, are you prepared to take questions from the councillors?
Sure, yes, absolutely.
Any councillors? Do you have any questions?
Yep, sorry, councillor Hamilton.
Okay, councillor Hamilton?
Thanks, Mr Mayor, thanks, Ms Johnson. My question is, do you think that the public perception is that Julian Assange is in jail for mere journalism?
No, I think, well, I, I think it depends who you speak to, but there's certainly a widespread perception that he's there for other reasons. I don't think, um, there's, I don't think it's that his case has been very well reported. So there's widespread misinformation and lack of knowledge. Um, I think there's a perception that WikiLeaks releases caused harm to innocent people by dumping material unredacted, that it might have something to do with that, which isn't the case. Um, the reality is that, um, WikiLeaks undertakes quite a stringent redaction process. And, um, you know, a brigadier general testified at Chelsea Manning's court martial that no harm had come to anybody as a result of the releases. Australian Task Force for the Department of Defence, uh, said that there was no security threat or harm. And even Joe Biden said they'd done no harm other than be embarrassing, so. And that came out in court at the extradition hearing, too. Even the U S prosecution admitted that no harm. And jury recently, you know, this, this year, admitted that no harm had come to anyone and that there was a, a serious and rigorous redaction process at WikiLeaks. But I think there's the perception that something to do with that, and I think there's the perception that it's to do with the Swedish investigation. And there's a perception that there were charges in Sweden, there were never any charges. There was never enough evidence to progress that beyond the preliminary investigation stage. Uh, there's the perception that women accused him of rape, neither woman ever accused him of rape. Um, that was, uh, the, one woman said the police made up the charges in text messages that were never contested. So there's a lot that, you know, Niels Melzer, the U N Repertoire on Torture, documented fifty dupresses violations and violations of the law in the Swedish investigation. And so people aren't aware of that, they aren't aware that he's being held in jail now with no custodial sentence in the UK, no charge in the UK, purely for extradition purposes. And in a high-security prison that's, um, primarily used for terrorism offences and murder. So, and high-security court, which is, uh, you know, which is absolutely unnecessary. Even if he was to be in prison, there's no reason he should be in an maximum security prison, there's no history of violence.
Uh, any further questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr Johnson. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, and now councillors, we move to N M twenty-nine slash twenty.
Mayor Said, I've got a question. I've, may I ask a question?
Sorry, sorry. Oh, I think, I got a feeling she's gone.
I had a question up, and I had my hand up. Can you get her back on?
Oh, see, I don't see hands. You, you have to unmute yourself. Oh, I don't see that, sorry.
Question also. Perhaps someone can moderate those questions and check the chat.
Okay, we'll do that from now on, I'm very sorry. Uh, the only way I can pick it up is if someone, uh, asks for a question and then puts their name to it. That's the only way I can, I can see it, but if someone's monitoring the questions, I'll ask for someone to keep monitoring it. Sorry.
Next time.
Sure, thank you.
About five or six seconds, um. Um, so I'll move on to N M twenty-nine slash twenty. Notice a motion from councillor Mattson, state government approval to Peabody Energy to extract coal beneath Sydney's Waranora Reservoir. And speaking for is Ms Winnie Wu. Ms Wu, you have three minutes.
Hi, uh, thank you, Randwick Council, for giving me the opportunity to speak on behalf of, uh, Climate Action Sydney Eastern Suburbs cases in regards to this motion. Uh, the decision to allow coal mining under the reservoir poses a direct threat to our drinking water. We are the only city in the world that allows longwall coal mining under our drinking water catchment. And considering that we spend, Sydney spends about three or four years out of every ten years with low dam levels, um, it is really logic-defined that we allow, uh, mining under our water catchment area. Um, so to highlight some of the issues, Water New South Wales said that longwall mining causes subsidence at depth underground and that land surface above ground. And this subsidence, um, happens, which is, describes, um, collapse of, um, land over mine voids. It can potentially damage infrastructure, it can cause loss from water storage streams, uh, which i, is what, um, is happening at this project. It may also impact the ecological integrity of overlying swamps and catchments. So these are also known as upland swamps. And furthermore, the cracks from these substances, uh, subsidences also allows toxic elements to be leached into the waterway. So, uh, some of the compounds that, uh, that can be leached are iron and magnesium and trace elements of ni, zinc and nickel, which are all very toxic to aquatic life. Um, and this is our drinking water. So Waranora currently has the lowest dam levels of Sydney despite recent rain. And this correlates with observation made by National Parks Association that the water in the eastern tributary of, um, of this dam above the mine is disappearing into subsidence cracks instead of flowing into the dam. And the, this is, has also been observed and confirmed by the planning department's compliance team in two thousand and eighteen. So in light of the, um, yeah, in light of the pressure on Sydney's drinking water catchment. Sorry. Well, can, can somebody mute that? Sorry.
Yes, I'm sorry about that. Continue, sorry. Um, you've got another minute.
Thank you. Um, so City of Sydney Council has written to the New South Wales Planning Minister, Rob Stokes, requesting that New South Wales Government revise its decision on the longwall coal mining approval under Waranora Reservoir, our drinking water catchment. And cases would like Randwick Council to support this motion as mining under any drinking water catchment, let long our drinking water catchment is dangerous. And the damage that we have seen, um, that has been confirmed to happen is permanent and it is irreversible. We commend that the Randwick Council, um, we commend the Randwick Council for considering this proposal. And, um, I feel that your action to support this, um, will be in line with your recent decision to address the current climate emergency, as well as a step in the right direction for the ecological, um, welfare of the area, as well as, um, having social and economic benefits to, um, the Randwick citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Ms Wu. Any questions for Ms Wu? Oh, thank you. Thank you, Ms Wu. Um, so now we'll move on to, to deal with the items with that we had speakers for. I'll just make sure everyone's, and just to, can I just make an announcement too? Uh, we've looked into the chat, my and other people's chat, I haven't had a chat all night. Um, we are having teething problems being our first night. So I think to make it easier for the rest of the evening, can you please, if you have any questions, moving motions or anything at all, please, uh, just unmute yourself, mention it and then give your name, but please give your name at the same time. So now we'll move on to the items we had speakers for. So the first one was M M thirteen slash twenty, financial support for the Delhi, the Delhi Women and Children's Centre during the pandemic. And as that is a mayor of minute, I ask you to, if I commend that mayor of minute to you, do I have anyone to? There's no speakers, I commend that, I'll, uh, ask you all to vote for that. So I'll put it. All those in favour?
Aye.
Aye.
Those again?
So, so which mayor of minutes this? Is this for?
M M thirteen slash twenty, the one we had a speaker on.
Thank you.
Yeah, yep.
Okay, so, um, so I declare that carried. Now we have G M two slash twenty, Clough Valley Childcare Incorporated, request for financial assistance.
I'd like to move something.
Councillor Neeson, you're the mover. Do I have a second, though?
Yes, seconded.
We need to know.
Councillor Shuri?
Yeah, we don't know what's been moved yet, so how can we say?
Oh, thank you. What I'm, what I'm moving here, um, fellow councillors, is that first the report be read and noted. And secondly, that given that the discussion may include, uh, discussion in relation to the financial hardship of a resident or rate payer, that the matter be deferred for consideration in conjunction with G M three stroke twenty.
And I had, uh, councillor Shuri, has had a second, though? Is that correct?
Yeah, I'm a seconder and I, I, um, agree with that. I think that the, um, the fact that we will be discussing finances of a, an organisation that might not be. um, perfect to be out in the, our, our sort of realm. Um, I think it would be best if we discussed that, any finances in the, you know, in the closed session.
So then I won't have any debate because we'll debate that later. All those in favour?
Aye.
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 All those against? I declare that carried. So CS fourteen slash twenty, Taste of Coogee Festival, location.
I'd like to move that.
I move. Councillor Shuri moves.
Oh, yeah, I'd like to move that.
Councillor Shuri, you've moved CS fourteen slash twenty. Do I have a second there?
What's you moving?
Seconded, seconded, Mattson.
What you moving?
Uh, councillor Mattson's seconding.
I'm.
Just moving the report as recommended.
Councillor, sorry, Mayor, I'm quite happy to second the, uh, the motion that councillor Shuri is proposing.
Okay, um, I'm just trying to find the page and I'm terribly sorry, I'm not up to it yet. Um, I want to move it with the recommendations with an amendment. Um, the, the amendment is that, hold it on. I'm sorry councillors, okay, that we replace, um, the current D with, um, approval of event not to be on the same day as councillors' eco fair. And, and then, so the original council, the original C, the original D becomes E. Is that clear? Sorry.
Yes.
Yeah.
Is that, can you see that on the screen, councillor Shuri? Is that?
Yes, I can. Yeah.
Look what you're, what you're saying, yeah?
Yeah, that's it.
And then councillor Nielsen, you still second that amendment?
Yes, I, I, I'm happy to do that. Um, the only other suggestion I would put in is, um, and I think it's centered earlier in relation to, um, point C, um, where we say and beyond. So to just say, uh, subject to the location being found suitable for the event. And, and the reason I'm saying that is just that it's a, gives us both Taste of Coogee and out and, and counsel if the, uh, location is not considered, um, suitable. But it's definitely not to be held at Coogee Oval.
So the reason I, I put, I put this amendment up is that, um, for the past couple of years, they've been in, um, Coogee, Taste of Coogee has been in direct competition with councils run Eco Living Fair. And, um, it seems really detrimental to councils, um, especially when council are helping Taste of Coogee, to be detrimental to councils' event, to have two large events on the same day. So that's the reason I, I'm requesting, I'm requesting this.
And councillor Neeson, would you like to speak on it as well? A second there?
We, um, agree with the councillor's concern because I've always had that same concern also because it's a great stretch for our, uh, council staff to be at two locations at, on the one day or on the weekend. And also, of course, for our residents who might like to go to both events. So it's definitely crucially important. The other thing that I think we have to strongly, um, state is there is absolutely no way, not meaning any disrespect for the speaker we have tonight, but Coogee Oval is a place for our cricket and for our football. And it's not a place that, um, can hold a, an event over two days. Absolutely not.
And councillors, would you like to speak against? And now please, if you can just say yes, I would and your name, please. Anyone speaking for as well?
I would like to speak for councillor Mattson.
Councillor Mattson, go ahead.
Yes, look, Mr Mayor, I found the address by the speaker unfortunately combative. Um, essentially, my experience of this event is council has tried very hard to make it work at the Coogee location. It is just physically not possible. That is the problem. In the past, we have sponsored the event. We've paid, uh, some twenty thousand dollars for a leafletting on, in one year to promote it. This is not an attack on the Chambers of Commerce. This is just the reality. The Coogee Oval just can't take the amount of use that we expect of it. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Mr Mayor, I'd like to speak.
Councillor, councillor D'Souza?
My friends and councillors, I share councillor Mattson's concern. The speaker was very combative. She attacked the very heart of what we do best, and that is looking after our community. We talk about Coogee sparkles. We talk about our carols. We do a great job in presenting events. Now, Coogee Oval, as former mayor Nielsen pointed out, and councillor Shuri, mayor Shuri, former mayor Shuri too, has brought to our attention, is a very sacred place. It's the same place where the Ella Brothers, Mike Whitney and other, Alan Turner, many of the great Australian sports people. It, it's a sacred ground. It's ground Richie Benno. It's ground which is sacred to those at first that love sport and sports under threat at the moment because of the virus. We agreed to allow this event to go ahead. I never supported it because I found local businesses, I got the impression, didn't support it because they didn't have enough representation. This is an event organised by outsiders for outsiders. When my question was put, what are you afraid of? It wasn't meant to threaten anyone or question anything other than to find out what we were made obvious of. Tenerife Reserve is not suitable, not just because of its location. It's because no alcohol can be served at this place and alcohol is rampant at the Taste of Coogee. Now, we need to protect our reserves. We spend a lot of money looking after that reserve and we need to ensure Coogee Oval is used for that purpose. I know and I've seen what happens after events. The, the speaker gave us an idea as we should have, we can have many events there. If one, if a rodeo wanted to go there or a bike track or a bike racing place or those other events which would ruin our soil and our grounds, best because they're members of Randwick City or because they've applied, should they be allowed to do it? The answer is no. Coogee Oval was made for cricket and rugby and other activities which support that sense of community. The Taste of Coogee can, in this case, not build a sense of community, but can be used as a destructive influence. Use Tenerife Reserve. It's there for that purpose. Parking isn't a problem. Trust me, I live in Coogee. And in saying that, why don't we spread the joy around? Leave the beaches, the parks, the ovals for the residents to enjoy. If an outsider wants to come and have events, if she feels so confident about her events, as she says, we should be embarrassed by what we do. Josh Hay, I'm sure, is there and he knows what a wonderful job we do. And Katie Anderson and others. So this was an attack on council itself. But in doing so, let's put that behind us. The fact is, Coogee Oval should be left in pristine condition for sport. Go to Tenerife Oval, support the event by all means, those councillors that want to. But let's send it to where it should go, Tenerife Reserve. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
I'd like to move an amendment.
Thank you councillor D'Souza. Councillor Roberts, you're moving an amendment?
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd like to move the amendment that I, that I emailed earlier today.
Um, do you mind if we just wait a couple of seconds for, uh, that to come up? And I think it's there, yeah?
Yeah, so the amendment is that, uh, council note the formal position of all stakeholders in regards to the event. That the Taste of Coogee Festival be held at Coogee Oval in twenty twenty and beyond, subject to event approval, and that the stakeholders be notified. Do I have a second there?
Yeah, I've seconded that, councillor Roberts.
Thank you councillor Hamilton. Firstly, I'd like to thank councillor D'Souza when he was the mayor for supporting the Taste of Coogee when it was at its most critical, uh, point, whereas in, in grave danger of, uh, of being cancelled about three or four years ago. So thank you very much councillor D'Souza for supporting the event, especially when you were the mayor. I really appreciate that. So, uh, and also councillors, I, I'd just like to please ask you just to put aside the combat, combativeness, uh, of the speaker. Uh, she's very passionate about the event. And just please, uh, please just think that it was just, the passion was coming out. And please don't, uh, let the combat, combativeness, uh, uh, influence your thinking and ask you to consider the issues, uh, issues at hand. So councillors, the community highly supports this event. That cannot be argued. Um, they are highly supportive of the event, the local community. And, uh, Coogee's premier food and wine festival deserves to be in the premier location of Coogee. And that location can only be Coogee Oval. Trennery Reserve is at the far south. In fact, it's as, it's as far south as you can possibly go.
Councillor, councillor Roberts, councillor Roberts, sorry. Um, on a, a matter of technicality, because this is a direct negative to councillor Shuri's motion, this will have to be a foreshadowed motion. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Well, I, I understand what you're saying, but, uh.
So we need to vote, we need to, yeah, because you're, you're asking for it to stay at Coogee Oval. She's asking for it to move. So.
Well, I'm just, I'm just proposing an alternative location.
No, well, that will be the foreshadow. That's what actually, that's against the motion. So what you'd have to do is foreshadow a motion and then we'll vote on councillor Shuri's. And as you know, if that loses, then we'll come back to yours.
Okay, Mr Mayor, I, 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 um, I foreshadow an amendment.
Amendment, yeah.
If this vote is, uh, is not carried, I foreshadow that I'll be moving an amendment, which is what you can see on the screen before you.
Cool, thank you.
So.
So I'll go back to councillor Shuri's. Would you like to speak on that one?
Do you mean me or councillor Roberts?
No, sorry, councillor Roberts. If councillor Roberts would like to speak.
Mr, Mr Mayor?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Mr Mayor, I would like to continue speaking now against the motion.
Yeah, that's right. That's what I mean. Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. So Trennery, Trennery Reserve is as far south as you possibly can go in, uh, in. Can you still hear me?
Yeah.
Can you see that screen?
Yeah.
Yes.
So Trennery Reserve is as far south as you can possibly go and still be in Coogee compared to Coogee Oval, which is right in the Coogee Town Centre. So there's some major problems with regard to Trennery Reserve in that respect. There's also other issues that we heard, uh, from the speaker, including, uh, that, uh, there's no public transport to Trennery Reserve. That will especially affect, uh, the elderly and disabled and will force more people to use cars. The crowds can't easily spill to the shops of Coogee Bay Road. And that's the whole point of the Taste of Coogee Festival, put on by the Chamber of Commerce to support local Coogee businesses. And the public awareness of that location is very low and that will create a risk to the success of the event. And if you, if you're interested in, in this, in the event being a success, then I would ask you to consider that as well. Moving it is a risk to the success of the event. And I think in the current environment, we cannot risk the success of this event because, because we are, we're obviously in a, in an unprecedented global pandemic that is decimating all local businesses around the world. Now, Coogee Oval has existing fencing. It is a secure location. It's central. That location supports local businesses by having, by having all the crowds easily accessible to Coogee Bay Road and all the other local businesses. The local residents in that area are already used to living in a town centre. If it goes to Trennery, we could have a, a hornet's nest of problems with the local residents. Frankly, Coogee Oval is one of the main reasons for the success of the event. Now, it's not difficult to share the oval with all stakeholders. I think that is reasonable. The arguments to not share it do not stack up and I think a reasonable person would agree with that. If you look at the Sydney Football Ground, the Sydney Cricket Ground and others, they share it with international acts. If they can do it, we can do it as well. Now, the stakeholders should share in good faith and certain stakeholders should not have the opportunity to monopolise a community asset to the detriment of other stakeholders. They should all share it together. Now, one weekend a year is not unreasonable. So I ask councillors, let's send a message to all Coogee stakeholders that we expect them to share our community assets, our wonderful community asset that is Coogee Oval. Let's send a message that we support Coogee businesses and Coogee's hugely supported event. Let's move on. Let's keep Taste of Coogee in Coogee. Let it help our community emerge from this terrible pandemic into a brighter and more optimistic future. Please councillors, I ask you to let common sense prevail. I will be opposing this motion. You have my foreshadowed amendment. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you councillor Roberts. Any other councillors who'd like to speak? Or against councillor Stavranos?
Yep, I'd like to speak against the, uh, against the motion before us. Yeah, Mr Mayor, we have an event here that, uh, has already established itself and it has an established location right in the heart of Coogee at the Coogee Oval. And I agree with councillor Roberts. The moment you move this event away from the main town centre and away from the businesses in the area, I could almost assure you that this event will fail. It will not succeed. Now, uh, the last thing I want to do is see this event go by the wayside. I really do believe that people do attend this event. They've, uh, they, in fact, they made a profit, uh, last year. Uh, and, uh, the event is starting to really pick up. It's, it's taking off. So I find it very, uh, upsetting that, uh, the event now, uh, is, is going to be relocated somewhere else where it could in fact be very detrimental to the success of the event. Um, you know, and, and, and Trennery Reserve is also in an area that could pose some, uh, safety and traffic issues in the locality. So, look, uh, I really believe the moment you relocate this event, you're taking it out of the town centre. Yeah, it's going to be detrimental to the local businesses who, who will profit from people that visit the event on the day. And, uh, the other point I want to raise is in relation to the fact that the, um, that Trennery Reserve is in a very open area by the ocean and it's subjected to very high wind. I've been up there a couple of times and in fact people fly there, quite there and it's a, uh, a, a dog park as well. So, look, I, I don't know how we're going to possibly, how logistically this event can work the moment you move it up to Trennery Reserve. And, and I think, look, as councillor Roberts said, we should give them the opportunity to, uh, to have one weekend every year to hold the event at the Coogee Oval. Because, uh, you know, the moment you take it away from there, I, I can't see the event lasting. And, uh, and Coogee Oval is perfect for it. They've got existing fencing. They are compliant with all occupational health and safety, uh, uh, issues. And, um, you know, I, I really don't understand. And it's got easy access for storeholders and patrons to the event. People don't even know where Trennery Reserve is. Uh, good luck finding it. So, uh, look, uh, I can't support, uh, the amendment put up by councillor Shuri and Nielsen tonight and I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Stavranos. Councillor Singh, I think you would like to speak?
Sorry, Mr, Mr Mayor, I was coughing. Uh, thank you, Mr Mayor. I've got a question. I remember the festival used to be held at Goldstein Reserve. Is that correct? Now, what happens with Goldstein Reserve as a alternate, uh, venue?
I'll pass that on to the Director of City Services. Mr Clark, are you there?
I am, Mr Mayor. Can you hear me?
Thank you. Yep, we can hear you clearly. Thank you.
Thank you. Through you, Mr Mayor. Yes, the councillor Singh is correct. The, the event some years ago was held at Goldstein Reserve. Um, there was issues expressed by, um, other agencies, um, at the time about the control and the fencing of the event. Um, as such, a, a fence site was sought, um, and Coogee Oval became available some years ago. Um, but yeah, there's nothing, um. Um but yeah, there's nothing um by way of uh preventive measures in fencing Trennery Reserve. Um if that was the case. Thanks, Mister Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Singh?
Thank you, Mister Mayor.
Okay.
I have a question.
Councillor Luxford?
Yeah, just a question to the relevant officer. I heard the mention there um in councillor Stavreinos's um a little talk there about the Taste of Coogee making a profit. Can we just confirm? I thought this is a non not-for-profit um event. Is it for-profit or not-for-profit? Just a clarification there to the relevant officer through you, Mister Mayor.
Um I'll put that through to the general manager.
Thank you.
Through you, Mister Mayor, uh the Chamber of Commerce is a not-for-profit organisation. Uh it is my understanding based on the financial information we have been provided in the past that the event does uh create a surplus.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other councillors who'd like to speak? So I'll put the.
Clarification. Sorry.
Yes, councillor Nielsen, yep, go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, just a clarification, um it's not a an amendment as such. The motion that has been put is actually the motion that was on the council business paper, the recommendation from officers and it was just a very minor a amendment that was added to clarify uh on point C, subject to a suitable location being found for the event, if it was not uh suitable. Um.
Yeah, so we're voting on the motion.
Yeah, as a recommendation from the council officers, yes, I think that's important for people to realise, yeah.
Okay, so councillors, as councillor Nielsen just described it, she's correct. Yeah, so councillor, sorry councillor Shuri, do you want to finish off? Would you like to speak on?
Can I close?
Yes.
I in um in defence of council, I would like to say to correct the speaker that this the Coogee Oval is only used for men's sport. We do use um Coogee Oval for women's cricket and women's rugby. Um both um the PG Gym Cricket Club and the Randwick Rugby Club have women's teams which they are really supporting and bringing up to the fore. So councillors, this is not an all-male event, you know, it it this this ground is used for women's sport as well, so I think we should take notice of this. Um I think the Trennery Reserve could really work, but I it's subject to council officers having, you know, having a complete, you know, investigation of that. But I'm I'm really, really passionate that it doesn't um go on the same day as our our own council's Eco Living Fair. So I really urge you to vote for this, councillors, thank you.
Thank you councillor Shuri. So councillors, I'll put it, all those in favour, say aye.
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 All those against?
No.
So that's unanimous. Um now we move on to.
No, no, I I move I move a division, my I was on mute.
Oh, sorry. Um so what I'll do is with divisions, yep, okay, that's fine. What I'll do is I'll just let you know, I'll call out your name and please give your answer as if we were at the seating at the chamber. So uh councillor Hamilton? Can I have your vote, please? Councillor Hamilton, you there? Oh, well, I might take that as an against, do I? Councillor Hamilton? Okay, councillor Shuri?
Four.
Councillor Nielsen?
Four.
Councillor Beech, the deputy mayor?
Four.
Councillor Stavreinos?
Against.
Councillor Luxford?
Four.
Councillor Parker?
Four.
Councillor Singh?
Four.
Councillor Andrews?
Four.
Councillor Bowen?
Four.
Councillor Mattson?
Four.
Councillor Roberts?
Against.
Councillor De Rocha? Councillor De Rocha?
Um four.
Councillor D'Souza?
All.
And councillor Hamilton, is he here now? Um councillor Hamilton, one more time. Sorry, so I'll declare that carried.
How did you vote?
Oh, sorry, and the mayor, sorry. Thank you councillor Nielsen. So I was waiting for councillor Hamilton, sorry.
Yeah, sorry, I'm against.
Uh so councillor Hamilton against and the mayor is for. So I'll declare that carried. So now we move on to NM twenty-eight slash twenty. That's the motion from councillor Beech celebrating Press Freedom Day and supporting press freedom for Australian journalists.
Uh thank you, Mister Mayor. Uh councillors.
Can I second that?
Seconded by councillor Shuri.
Thank you.
Okay.
Uh councillors, over the last few months, we've seen dramatic shifts that have taken place and it seems like the bleak of an eye. Uh the COVID nineteen pandemic has seen cities and whole countries go into lockdown, industries shut and thousands lose their jobs. Hundreds of thousands of people across the world have been hospitalised and over two hundred thousand people have now died of a disease that most of us had not even heard of until late last year. Everyday routines and freedoms we once took for granted have been profoundly changed. Our state and federal parliaments have shut down and decisions that affect all of our lives in the most significant ways are now being made behind closed doors. Yet most of us accept the fact that for the next few weeks or months at least, we will all have to pull together to make sacrifices and accept limits on our freedoms to protect the most vulnerable in the community. Councillors, we are very privileged to be here tonight as the only level of government that is still meeting. And we're here to debate a very important freedom and that is freedom of the press. This is a cornerstone of our democracy and is one freedom that we should not only cherish, but fight tooth and nail to defend. Press freedom is not a freedom we can afford to take for granted, yes, no, yet most of us do. Every day around the world, there are whistleblowers and journalists who risk their reputations, livelihoods, personal liberty and sometimes their lives to get the truth told. Through their work, profound injustices are brought to light. Victims have their voices heard, laws and sometimes even social norms are changed. Years and sometimes even decades of persistent investigation and dogged determination is needed to bring justice to victims of corporations such as James Hardy or the tens of thousands of victims of institutional child sex abuse. And in every case, enormous efforts are made by these powerful institutions to discredit the victims, whistleblowers and journalists who are seeking justice. Tonight, as we speak, Australian journalist and MEAA union member Julian Assange is remanded in custody in Belmarsh Prison in the UK. Many highly credible sources, including those that we've heard here tonight, attest to Julian Assange's critical state of physical and mental health. Julian Assange is mortally ill and needs to be released to obtain urgently needed medical treatment. Through the bravery of Chelsea Manning and Julian Assange, the world was able to not only read about but see with their own eyes footage of war crimes perpetrated by the US military during the Iraq War. In a grotesque miscarriage of justice, this act of journalism is being treated as an act of espionage by the world's most powerful state. The extradition of Julian Assange to face these trumped-up charges will not only be a tragedy for him but will set a precedent for the treatment of all journalists and whistleblowers who speak truth to power. Councillors, I urge you to support this motion and join the more than three hundred thousand Australians who have called for his release. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Shuri, would you like to speak a second there?
Um I reserve my right. I think councillor Beech has written a very um comprehensive motion and has covered everything in her speech, so I won't um hold you all up and um I I commend this motion to you.
Thank you. And and councillors, can I just remind you that if you do unmute yourself, we can hear background noise and conversations and photocopiers. Um anyone else would like to speak on the motion?
I would like to speak.
Yes, Mister Mayor.
So councillor councillor D'Souza first and then councillor Stavreinos after that and then I'll ask for more. Councillor D'Souza.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. My friends, freedom of the press is an integral part of any strong democracy. Freedom of the press is important because it plays a vital role in informing citizens about public affairs and monitoring the actions of government at all levels. When the press examines the actions of government, the nation benefits. News organisations expose corruption and cover-ups, deceptions and deceit, illegal actions and unethical behaviour. And they hold our leaders and our institutions accountable. Needless to say, by sharing knowledge and sparking debate, a free press invigorates and educates the nation's citizens. The notice of motion by councillor Beech has some merit because it is a request to celebrate journalism and the free press. But it quickly descends into a chaotic downward spiral as it attempts to vindicate a computer hacker who is involved in illegal activity that threaten the lives of many citizens of the world. If Assange is innocent of the crimes he is accused of, then he has nothing to fear, the courts. He has nothing to fear, the courts will find him innocent and he can enjoy his freedom again. But if he is found guilty, he should face the full weight of the law. Abuse of journalistic power and abuse of freedom of speech should not be condoned or supported behind the thin veil of democracy. There should be little doubt that freedom will be a short-lived possession unless the people are informed. In Assange's case, we have glorified a computer, we have a glorified computer hacker who's ego-blinded him and by his uncensored, petulant actions threaten the security of many Western nations. His actions were not for the public good or for the public interest, but for his own publicity, notoriety and financial gain. Assange has wanted in America to face eighteen charges, including conspiring to commit computer intrusion over the publication of the US cables a decade ago. He could face up to a hundred and seventy-five years in jail if found guilty. He is accused of working with the former US Army intelligence analyst Chelsea Manning to leak hundreds of thousands of classified documents. I won't get into the democratic uh leaks on 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 Hillary Clinton and maybe part, he should take a lot of responsibility for having a president of the United States who's telling us to inject insecticide or bleach into our systems. Now, this is all because he released WikiLeaks tapes and about about what occurred, you know, in 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 uh through Hillary Clinton's emails. My friends, there is no doubt that the liberty of the press is essential to the security of the state. But this was an abuse of the liberty of the press that endangered the lives of many. Therefore, it is very important we recognise and celebrate the brave journalists and news organisations that expose corruption and cover-ups, deceptions and deceits, illegal actions and unethical behaviour. And by their actions, hold our leaders and our institutions accountable without condoning the irrational actions of a cybercriminal. I am going to request the mover of this motion to limit a motion to the first paragraph and delete the rest. By doing this, the real intent and the sentiment of a motion is preserved without supporting and celebrating the illegal actions of a notorious computer hacker. I hope the mover, I I hope the the mover of the motion accepts it. If not, I will choose, I may choose, to foreshadow an amendment. Thank you, Mister Mayor.
So councillor D'Souza, can I can I just check just for one second, please? So you're asking for the mover to remove every item except number one?
Except number one, that's right, because that's what it's about, celebrating journalism and having a celebration and on the day.
Yeah. Councillor Beech, do you accept that?
Uh no.
Okay.
I'd like to speak, Mister Mayor.
Actually, I had councillor Stavreinos as number two, yeah, and then I'll put you down. Councillor Andrews after councillor Stavreinos.
That was bad.
Sorry, Mister. Sorry, Mister Mayor. There's councillor Andrews here. Has councillor D'Souza, is councillor D'Souza moving an amendment?
Not at this stage. I'd like to hear what others are saying and we may have a vote if the opportunity arises. I'm happy to move my amendment, which I've made clear is everything minus uh the first paragraph. But I'm happy for the debate to continue and see how.
Mister Mayor. Councillor Luxford?
Sorry councillors, I'm just, I'm just gonna take two seconds just to control it. So I had councillor D'Souza who has spoken, then councillor Stavreinos, then councillor Bowen, sorry, and then councillor Andrews, did you have a question? And then Luxford. Sorry, I'll just try to keep the order. Is that correct? As everyone can see it, D'Souza who's spoken, Stavreinos, Bowen and then Luxford. Correct? Councillor Stavreinos, you have the.
Thank you, thank you, Mister Mayor. Look, uh Mister Mayor, I won't be supporting this motion tonight for a number of reasons. This council is facing some of its biggest challenges that it's ever had to face due to the corova coronavirus outbreak. We're facing economic instability, we are juggling trying to keep our workforce employed and we're trying to overcome the social effects that this lockdown and isolation has brought upon us all. But anyone would think that judging by the motions that the Greens have put up tonight, that we are living in a utopia with no major challenges. So they decide to bring forward motions that are completely irrelevant to the operation of this council and will achieve nothing except waste our time and resources. On that basis alone, I won't be supporting this motion. Now, secondly, I am all in support of freedom of press and transparency in the media. Of course we all are. Any number of events that have occurred globally uh have exposed corruption, have exposed uh you know, political upheaval, uh you know, murders, deaths. You know, of course, we 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 love freedom of sp- uh freedom of speech and freedom of the press and we like the idea of the press being able to get information to the public. But what I'm not gonna stand for is the name Julian Assange being used with freedom of press and transparency in the media. Because that to me is just wrong. There's nothing wrong with obtaining information through the correct channels, but it's clear that Mister Assange is alleged to have hacked into US government databases, stealing confidential information and publishing this compromising the national security of a nation. I'm not gonna support a motion which supports a freedom of press when the information obtained was illegally obtained and borders on treason. Mister Assange has been charged under the computer fraud and abuse act and if he isn't guilty of committing these offences, why isn't he allowing himself to be brought before a court to be tried? If any one of us committed an offence, we would be charged and tried before a court. What makes Julian Assange so special? Is he above the law? Is that what this motion is trying to say? The fact remains that Mister Assange has been charged and the allegations made against him are serious. When you compromise the national security of any nation by stealing information, then that isn't freedom of press. That's computer hacking and it's a criminal offence in any country around the world. This motion is nothing short of a joke and chose just how out of touch the Greens are with all the serious challenges that we are currently facing. Fancy bringing forward a motion like this to make a political statement at a time when we are facing a one in one here one a one in one hundred year pandemic. Thank you very much councillor.
Thank you councillor Stavreinos. Councillor Bowen?
Yeah, thanks, Mister Mayor. Look, I I can't support the motion in the form that it's in. I'm a bit attracted to the uh suggestion by councillor D'Souza that we retain paragraph one. I'd also suggest retaining paragraph seven. Uh but I I and I I I'll be perfectly honest, I I'm not in no position to make any assessment of Julian Assange. Um uh and I'm very reticent to have the council taking a position. I mean, the reality is, I I just don't feel that we we would know enough about it, but more than that, I agree with what councillor um Stavreinos has said. But more than that, I agree with what councillor Stavinos has said. I read a report the other day that in Coogee and Clovelly postcode, 2,000 people have lost their job in the last month. And here we are putting something up like this. I'm all for press freedom and that's why I've got no problem with one and seven. But the rest of this, to me, I'm sorry, it looks indulgent. And the thing that really underscores it for me is there was a really important decision in the High Court about press freedom that came down a few weeks ago where an AFP warrant was found to be illegal and set aside by the court. There's no mention of that. And, and also, our Southern Courier seems to have been pretty much gone the way of the dinosaur. There's no discussion about that. I think it's, we're not, in this time, I just think it's not a good look for this council to be taking a position about something that's really got nothing to do with the council that I don't think any of us of our hand on our hearts could say we knew enough about to really take a position. So I think the way through is, as suggested by councillor D'Souza, because we all agree in press freedom, it's fundamental. And, and it's, it's, it's a worry that our council is not subject to the same press scrutiny that perhaps it has been in the past. So I think it is an important motion and we should support it. But it's the, it's points two through to six, I think, that is where the floor is. And I would support it in an amended form of one and seven, but I can't support it in the current format if, if the mover chooses to keep it in that format.
Councillor Beach, do you accept to amend it in accepting one and seven?
Uh, no.
And removing two to six?
No.
No?
No.
Okay. Councillor Luxford? Do you still wish to speak?
Yep, I still wish to speak. Okay. I've just, I've had a good look at this again and I have to go along the lines of councillor Bowen and councillor D'Souza and Stavinos. I'm happy to support, support this motion by, in keeping one, items one, six and seven and deleting the rest. I don't think that I can support them. You know, freedom of press, I have a son who's studying to be a journalist. So of cour-, and I haven't, you know, and I support freedom of press. And I think we all do. But I don't, I cannot support the motion in its entirety that it is now. And I'm happy to support the motion with items one, six and seven.
Councillor Beach, do you accept one, six and seven and remove two, three, four and five?
Just give us a moment.
Sure, sure.
Um, I would support one, six and seven.
Thank you councillor Beach. So councillors, councillor Beach, do you mind if I just put it then? I'll just put it, councillors.
May I close the debate?
Yeah, it's still your motion because you've amended it, councillor Beach, so I'll get you to close it. Sorry councillor Andrews, I'll just move on. Councillor Beach, can you just?
Mister Mayor, may I speak on this matter?
I think I'll just let, I think I'll close it because.
You did, you did say earlier my name and I was gonna have, I was gonna speak.
This is about freedom of the press, freedom of speech.
Freedom of speech.
Sorry councillor, go ahead. In the interest of fishing.
Gotta practise what you preach. Practise what you preach.
Sorry, can I just confirm, is my microphone working? Can you hear me?
Yes.
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 I would also like to speak.
So councillor Andrews, on which matter, you're accepting the one, six and seven? Or do you want to speak on?
I'm speaking, I'm speaking against it, Mister Mayor. I, I would like to put a, foreshadow a further amendment of one, paragraph one and paragraph seven. I do not accept paragraph six.
I'll second that, I'll second that.
I concur.
Oh, it's a foreshadowed, yeah, okay.
Foreshadowed.
Councillors, remember to say your name afterwards. Councillor Roberts?
Thank you, Mister Mayor. The last sentence of point six says the letter should reference the points made above. And those points have now been deleted. So therefore, that's, that's not carried out.
Okay.
But it would reference point one. So, but we can still, I can.
So therefore, having six in, with all the others out, is point of order, is out of order?
No, I disagree.
The whole motion should be out of order.
Councillor, councillors.
Excuse me, may I just make a point?
Sorry councillor Beach, yeah, I'll let you speak. I'm just letting the other councillors. Please don't interrupt, please don't take yourself off mute unless you do want to speak on a motion or against a motion. And councillor Beach.
I would like to speak in favour of the motion, councillor Madsen.
Okay, thank you councillor.
Can I just, honestly, this is ridiculous. Can I just clarify something, please?
Yes, go ahead, go councillor.
I am happy to accept one, six and seven. And noting councillor Robert's point that at point six, we just removed the last sentence, the letter should reference the points made above.
Thank you councillor Beach, that makes it quite simple. So I'll go, thank you. And I'll go back to councillor Roberts now. I'm sorry councillor Andrews, councillor Andrews, sorry.
Thanks, Mister Mayor. I, I can't support paragraph six of councillor Beach's motion. I agree, but this motion should not have been put on the business paper. I don't think it's got any reference whatsoever to Randwick City Council. And I've, I personally thought this motion should have been ruled out of order in the first place. But in any event, it's on the business paper tonight and I'm happy to debate it. But as councillor Stavinos said and councillor Bowen said, we have some big issues going on here in Randwick City Council at the moment of COVID-19. And as councillor Bowen has said, you know, high unemployment in our local government area. And I'm surprised we're wasting our time tonight in debating this matter which is before us. But I think any reference to Julian Assange should be removed from his motion. And on that respect, I'm happy to support paragraphs one and paragraph seven because I do support freedom of, of press. And I will support paragraphs one and seven, but there's no way I will support paragraph six in its current form. So I, I'd like to put forward an amendment that paragraph one and seven be the motion.
Have I got a second? Second that, I'll second that. Councillor Stavinos.
Councillor Stavinos is seconding it?
Yep.
So now we'll be discussing the amendment, which is number one and seven.
On the amendment, Mister Mayor, councillor Madsen.
And councillor Madsen speaking on the amendment, thank you.
Yes, councillors, look, I can't support the wholesale gutting of this motion as many of us have pointed out already during this debate. Yes, we do have the coronavirus active and freedom of the press is vital in these times. Must I remind you that in the early detection phase in China, the doctor that had detected the outbreak of the infection was not able to express himself openly and the forces of the state put pressure on him to go quiet. What I'm saying is freedom of the, the press is very important. If there had been a truly freedom of the press prevailing there, then we would have had a much earlier response. Now, I do think this is a very valid motion to be putting. I would remind councillors that under the point three, councillor Beach has pointed out that a petition containing 270 signatures, one of the ever largest, was put to the Australian government. Now, don't tell me that in Coogee, there are not a sizeable number of our residents that felt that they were morally bound to sign that petition. Do not tell me that in Randwick, of all councils, there is not a fervent body of people that do believe that Julian Assange has been ill-treated, has been overly treated for his apparent or alleged menace. And that, yes, we do value freedom of speech. And in the time of horrifying of the COVID-19 virus, we do need it. There will be other incidences that come along in the coming years where it will be vital for our free speech, where it will be vital for whistleblowers like Mister Assange to come out of the woodwork and say and reveal what's really going on. Don't just say this is irrelevant to it. It is not.
I move the motion be put, Mister Mayor.
Councillor, it's actually the amendment, councillor Nielsen. Does anyone want to speak on the amendment? Which is the amendment is one and seven.
Uh, no, I will, I will speak on the amendment. Well, we're not gonna. Can I speak on the amendment?
Yeah, sure councillor Beach, go ahead.
Very briefly, very briefly. Councillors, I can't support this amendment. The reason I put this to council, obviously, I'm very well aware of the situation we are in with the pandemic. But we have an Australian citizen who is at risk of imminent death. This is the information I've received from attending a number of forums. It was the what 12-month anniversary of Julian Assange's remand in Belmarsh about two weeks ago. There were worldwide forums. He may die. Now, you may recall other situations where Australian prisoners have died overseas, have been executed. It has sent shockwaves through the, through our nation. We remember them. I, I cannot in all conscience, when we have no state or federal parliament sitting, when members of the public, for good reason, are not allowed to assemble in public or protest, you're not even allowed to go in a car convoy. At the moment, a notice of motion in a local council meeting is the only way that these types of issues can be debated in public. There is no other public forum available at the moment. It's an important issue. Julian Assange is not a hacker. WikiLeaks is a mechanism, a technical mechanism whereby whistleblowers can release information without being traced. Chelsea Manning, who was working for the US military in their intelligence department, released those documents when she saw war crimes, footage of war crimes of innocent civilians being killed.
Point of order, councillor Hamilton. So councillor Hamilton, point of order.
Yep, bringing in new information into the argument, so I think we should just wrap it up.
I'm not closing.
No, sorry, that is not a point of order, this was an amendment.
Councillor Beach.
Yeah, okay, thanks very much, Mister.
Thank you councillor Hamilton and councillor Beach. I think I also would like, you can, I'll come back to you with the motion if it comes back to that. Councillor Parker, sorry, I missed you. I mentioned your name before and I didn't bring you into the argument. Councillor Parker, do you still wish to speak?
No, look, I, I was only seeking to clarify the inclusion of point six. But now that there is an amendment to clearly outline its removal, that is fine. I have nothing further to add.
Okay, thank you. So councillors, I'm gonna put it, I'll put the amendment. So all those in favor.
Can we have a division?
Sorry, can we have a division? Second the call for the division.
Councillor, sorry councillors, one at a time, and I heard councillor Singh first. Councillor Singh was the only one.
I second the call for the division, Mister Mayor.
Councillor Singh?
I seconded the call for the division, Mister Mayor, with all respect.
Thank you councillor Madsen, I'll remember that, but councillor Singh didn't want to speak. I'll just let him speak first.
On the amendment, Mister Mayor, I wouldn't be supporting the amendment because I think there's, there's nothing wrong with point number six. All we are asking for is the British government to show some compassion for an Australian and a father. Now, remember, his son is a father now, he has two kids. Now, what we're asking in point six is that the British government releases Julian Assange on bail because of the COVID-19 situation and also because he's on, he's in a very poor health. The, the rest, one and seven, I've got no problem with that. But I think it's appropriate to include point number six. So I won't be supporting the amendment which doesn't include point six. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Singh. So I'll, I'll put the amendment. So all those in favor of the amendment which reads will only be point one and seven, as you can see on the screens. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against?
Aye.
No.
No. No.
I think the nos have it.
Ask for division.
A division, okay. I'll ask for a division and councillors, I'll go around the table again. And please unmute yourself, say your name and say, oh no, you won't have to say your name. I'll call your name, please say yea or nay and please answer straight away. Councillor Hamilton, for or against?
For.
Councillor, for, okay. Councillor Shuri?
Against.
Councillor Nielsen?
Against.
Deputy Mayor councillor Beach?
Against.
Councillor Stavinos?
For.
Councillor Luxford? Councillor Luxford?
Sorry, my apologies, against.
Councillor Parker?
For the amendment.
Councillor Singh?
Against the amendment.
Councillor Andrews?
For the amendment.
Councillor Bowen?
For the amendment.
Councillor Madsen?
Against the amendment.
Councillor Roberts?
For the amendment.
Councillor De Roshan? Councillor De Roshan?
Sorry, for the, for the amendment.
Councillor D'Souza?
For the amendment.
And the mayor is against? I'll just wait and see. So the amendment has carried.
Beautiful. Yay.
So now we've, now we go on to NM 29 slash 20.
Question, Mister Mayor. Point of order?
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. I know what you're gonna say councillor Roberts, sorry. Now the amendment has become the motion, now we'll vote on the motion. Sorry, sorry councillors, I'll get back. So now we're voting on the motion, which is point one and seven. So I'll do the same again. I'll go around, I'll just do it as a division and go straight around the table again. So councillor Hamilton?
For.
Councillor Shuri?
I think you need to, no one called for division.
Against.
I'll, I'll still do it anyway. It just makes it easier councillor Roberts for Mister Kelly. Councillor Nielsen?
For, unfortunately.
Councillor Beach?
For, I concur with councillor Nielsen.
Councillor Stavinos?
For. For.
Councillor Luxford?
For.
Councillor Parker?
For.
Councillor Singh?
For.
Councillor Andrews?
For.
Councillor Bowen?
For.
Councillor Madsen?
For.
Councillor Roberts? Councillor Roberts?
For.
Councillor De Roshan?
For.
Councillor D'Souza?
For.
And the mayor is for, so I declare that carried. So, so now we'll move on to NM 29 slash 20. Notice a motion from councillor Madsen, state government approval to Peabody Energy to extract coal beneath Sydney's Waranora Reserve. Do I have a second, though?
Councillor Shuri?
Councillor Shuri is seconding. Councillor Madsen, would you like to speak on the motion?
Just put it.
Mayor, I move it with the two additional clauses that I circulated. I think they are on the, on the, on the document in front of us now, thanks to Mister Kelly. Look, I'll just quickly go through this.
I'll just put it.
No, with all respect, Mister Mayor. Uh, look, the corona bonus, the COVID-19 virus had an unfortunate impact on this issue. There was a 10,000 signature petition put to the Legislative Assembly of New South Wales. Normally, the legislation requires that if a petition has 10,000 signatures, it must be. be debated, unfortunately, and I have no particular problem with this council, the government had to be, um, um, put into recess because of the coronavirus. What I do then have a problem with is the subsequent approval by the Minister of the Peabody Energy Longwall Tunnel Proposal. For that reason, I have put clause C, which seeks clarification from the government how it can remove an inconsistency. The inconsistency arises from a report put to the government by the ex, by the chief scientist of New South Wales, that there should be no further activity of this sort in the catchment. And another clause in that report, recommendation, said that there should be an expert committee set up. The expert committee was set up, it duly put its recommendations to the government. They were quite scathing, they were, they were supported, they were based on reports by New South, Water New South Wales, which itself was against longwall mining under the Sydney reservoir via this technology. But this was such a damning report that the government then stated that he was accepting all the recommendations of the expert panel. But the approval out of government at a time when government was in recess, when there had been a 10,000 signature petition by the minister of this, is so inconsistent with that promise by the government, that it is, that it is actually going to accept all the recommendations of the expert panel. My motion is put on the behalf of the residents of not just our area, but Sydney and the Northern Illawarra, who may now have to live with an activity that has been identified by a number of experts now, that has been condemned to some degree by Water New South Wales as likely to be a menace to the drinking quality of our water, that we treat this with great concern. I do not know why the government would have stated that it was going to accept all the recommendations and yet, and yet use the passage or the arrival of the COVID-19 epidemic to essentially put through on the quiet approval for this particular venture. My suggestion is that we do call upon the minister, and that's why I phrase the wording as delicately as I can, but I think that it's now in the state government's court, the ball is in their court, they've approved a very unsupportable industry, the longwall mining under the water catchments of Sydney and the Northern Illawarra, they now have to make this good. This has major ramifications and I would ask for support.
Thank you councillor Mattson. Councillor Shuri, would you like to speak as seconder?
No, I withhold my right, but thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak on the motion?
Well, I'll speak.
Councillor Roberts?
I'll speak too, Mr Mayor.
Okay, councillor Stravinos after that. Okay, cool, thank you.
I'll speak as well, thank you.
Okay, councillor Vich. Any others, I'll just put the ball in row and we'll leave it at those three, thank you. So councillor Roberts first, yeah, sorry, councillor Roberts first.
Yeah, I just, I've just got concerns that, that this is potential green tape gone mad and I note that it wouldn't have been approved if it hadn't gone through the normal processes, including environmental assessment. And I see in the City Morning Herald article regarding this, that, that a Peabody spokesman said they, they need to continue to supply critical steelmaking coal to Port Kembla Steelworks and that, and that assists jobs for over 400 local mining families. It also says that it was approved by the department, there's no mention of the minister, and a planning department spokeswoman said the department gave approval for it after comprehensively assessing the plan over, over six months. And the assessment included consultation with Water New South Wales, the Dam Safety Committee and the independent expert panel for mining in the catchment. She also added that the planning had adopted all of the expert recommendations imposed on the proposed mining. There is lots of conditions on this, it has been through the normal processes. It is unfortunate that parliament has closed, but in my view, this is green tape pursuance by the Greens councillor and it should not be supported. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Roberts, councillor Stravinos?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Last time I checked, the Waranora Dam was in the Sutherland Shire, not in Randwick City. And I don't understand why motions are being forward, are being brought forward that are completely outside of the jurisdiction of this council, not only geographically, but also as the local government. We have no say over this matter. Again, this council is facing some of its most serious challenges due to the coronavirus, but anyone would think that we're living in some sort of a utopia, you know, on another planet, judging by the motions that have been brought forward tonight. Doesn't Randwick Council already have enough challenges to be dealing with, that to be concerning itself with the matters that we have no say over? Our aim at this time should be keeping our staff in jobs, keeping our finances in order and trying to overcome the tough climate that we're in. On that note alone, I won't be supporting this motion. Secondly, anybody would think that judging by the wording of this motion, that coal extraction at Waranora Dam is a new concept and therefore should be debated in the state parliament. It should be noted that the approval for extraction at Waranora Dam was approved back in 2009 and this approval has been in the pipeline for more than 10 years. So to suggest that the debate has been gagged as a result of the pandemic is just wrong. The criteria and the scrutiny that this application has been subjected to over the last 10 years through the various government departments and bureaucracies is more than enough to substantiate the state government's approval in giving the green light. You may have a petition signed by 10,000 people who are against this coal extraction, but for every person against this mine, there would be just as many in favour of it. At a time when people right across this nation are doing it tough and we have people losing jobs every day, I'm not going to vote in favour of a motion that will see 400 local people lose the opportunity to have work and see over 1,000 indirect jobs being lost in the Illawarra region. This motion is political grandstanding at its best and shouldn't have been brought to this council with discussion as it falls well and truly outside of our jurisdiction geographically and at a local government level, and I'll leave it at that.
Thank you councillor Stravinos, councillor Vich?
Well said, Harry.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This, Waranora Dam may not be in the Randwick LGA, that we all consume water from the Waranora Dam, we all, we all wash our clothes with it, have showers, water our gardens, it's used by every single person. This proposal is opposed by.
Councillor Vich, councillor Vich, can I just?
Can you hear me?
Get you, yeah, I can hear you, but could you just, wait, councillors, can you please do not interrupt when a councillor is speaking? Please remember that you are being live with a live audience and please be polite enough to allow a councillor to speak and then if you do have any questions or any statements, please leave it till after they finish. Thank you councillor Vich.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. We all use water. Now, this proposal is being opposed by Water New South Wales. They made public statements against it. You know, a few months ago, we were in the midst of an atrocious drought. I mean, most of the New South Wales rivers had dried up. We were have, for the last couple of years, we've, we've seen many reports of mass fish deaths, it's just not the water out there. We've all seen the coverage of, of the rain showing the, the water flowing back down the rivers. Water is precious and in all honesty, while we all support jobs and, and the work that different people need to do, every single one of us is, is dependent on, on having, you know, a secure water supply. This is just a no brainer. I mean, you don't risk undermining dams and water supplies for, for cities and people who are using them for agriculture and for the wilderness which needs it as well. So I commend the motion and urge all councillors to support it.
Councillor Mattson, would you like to wrap it up?
Thank you very much, just to.
Actually, I wanted to speak on the motion.
Oh, sorry councillor Hamilton, would you like to speak?
Yes, thanks Mayor.
Okay.
I just wanted to note that I find it really disturbing that suspension of New South Wales Parliament has prevented the debate. I think that the New South Wales Parliament have been extremely busy. If we start bringing out every single motion, every single petition, every single item on the agenda before the 20th of March and hold it up to the New South Wales state government and, and try to hold them to account for their lack of progress in moving these motions and petitions forward, I think that as a council, we would look like fools. I think that it was, would be extremely embarrassing for us, a group of people, to stand on top of the heads of others and say, we are the only council that really cares about things, we're the only council that really cares about water, ironically, it's absolutely bucketing down right now, and there's plenty of water, and I've said it actually in the past when we've talked about water, with the trees dying, it will rain, it'll be fine. I just am appalled that we would put our names to such a motion to say that the New South Wales Parliament, what, they've been sitting on their laurels, they've been sitting around doing nothing, you know, kicking a stone around, around the playground and not making a move on what others deem as the, you know, the most important topics or issues, debates, petitions that need to be discussed right now? It's just, you know, it's just amazing, we've had to put up with this for so long, these hard left radical motions coming through saying, we must vote on this and if you don't vote on this, then you mustn't be a good councillor. Well, the fact is, we are really good councillors and we're caring about the residents and that's why we need to do that.
Yeah, I, I accept your point of order councillor Mattson. Councillor Hamilton, uh, yeah, it's a little bit off topic.
How is it off topic? He didn't even say what the point of order was. He just said the words point of order.
I could imagine where it was going and I think it's to do with that.
No, he needs to, he needs to actually, he needs to state what the point of order is before you agree with the point of order.
Mr Mayor, the point of order was, was simply that at no point did I ever say anybody was a bad councillor on this council during this debate, that was just something the councillor just invented in her head.
Thank you councillor Mattson, I agree with you, so it is a point of order. Councillor Hamilton, do you have any more to say on the motion?
Yes, I do.
Okay, go ahead.
That levelling this type of mistrust in our state parliament at this point in time is a mistake and it is ill advised for anyone to vote that our parliament have not debated petitions and it's because of anything other than they have been completely preoccupied with something so unprecedented as what we are seeing right now. So I would urge everyone not to vote for this.
Thank you councillor Hamilton. Councillor Shuri, I think you have a question, is that correct?
No, I don't.
Oh, sorry, it came up on my team, sorry.
Yeah, that was, my chat was quite some time ago, that chat.
Okay, so it's very delayed then, sorry about that.
Yeah, yeah.
I know it just came up then.
Yeah, no, it was a question to, yeah, earlier.
So I just, again, I warned councillors that obviously the chat, because councillor Shuri's question only just got to me just then, so the chat is very far behind, so councillor Mattson, would you like to wrap it up?
Thank you very much, just briefly responding to councillor Hamilton. Look, this petition was.
Point of order, point of order, actually, that point of order was already raised and it was redacted, so it doesn't become a, a point to be made in the debate.
Councillor Mattson, would you like to?
What I was saying today, Mr Mayor.
Yeah, councillor Mattson, just wrap it up, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, responding to councillor Hamilton's argument that there was no basis to this petition, I must remind her that a 10,000 signature petition is required by legislation, by legislation to be debated. So this was no trivial matter and as I stated, I did not have a problem with parliament being suspended because of the virus. What I do have a, a problem with is the approval of this particular project, especially, especially when there is an inconsistency with what the expert panel told the government. That committee said that while it acknowledged the consequences of mining on surface water has been progressively substantiated over the last 10 years, they say, but, but limitations in monitoring and modelling mean that it is still difficult to verify conclusions by some stakeholders that mining has had negligible consequences on surface water supplies. The government, as I remind you, accepted all of those recommendations, but it still went ahead and approved this project. It did so at a time when the virus epidemic should surely have said to the government, we need to be much more careful about our essential supplies. The point I'm making is that they were warned by the expert panel, they were warned by Water New South Wales that there was a problem and that problem is, as the expert panel has said, they, there is no way to predict exactly what effect this mining will have. And there has been plenty of evidence to date that previous activities have resulted in subsidence, cracked riverbeds, disappearing of water streams. I think it is one of the essential things that any council in the city of Sydney should be doing and that is drawing the government to account on this extraordinary approval for such a project that had so little support. They insisted it be supported, of course, they've put in conditions and all sorts of things to try and make it work, but the, the very great concern I have is the concern noted by the expert scientists. We don't know what's going to happen, therefore we don't know if those conditions are going to work. Therefore, we are watching a state government attack, that's the only way I can put it, on the water supply of the Illawarra and, and Sydney. I think we do need to be very careful.
Thank you councillor Mattson. So councillors, I'll put it, all those in favour, say aye.
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 Mr Mayor of order, division.
Okay, I'll call.
I second the, second the, for a division.
Okay, I'll do the division and I'll go around.
I had it on the chat.
Yeah, I, I, as I said councillors, the chat just is very delayed, I, I.
No worries.
I really can't go by the chat, you just have to let me know verbally. So I'll go around the, the chamber again. Councillor Hamilton?
Against.
Councillor Shuri?
For.
Councillor Nielsen?
For.
Councillor Vich?
For.
Councillor Stravinos?
Against.
Councillor Luxford?
For.
Councillor Parker?
For.
Councillor Singh?
Against.
Councillor Andrews?
Against.
Councillor Bowen?
For.
Councillor Mattson?
For.
Councillor Roberts?
Nay.
Councillor De Russia?
Against.
Councillor De Souza? Councillor De Souza? Councillor De Souza?
I'd on his behalf, against.
Let me do a count.
Cheeky, Harry.
He's given it his proxy.
The mayor's for, I'll put my vote in and I'll give councillor De Souza about two more seconds. Councillor De Souza? That's, one second, I've just got to give him two more seconds councillors.
Abstain. There must be something wrong with his mic. Councillor Stevenson?
Mr Mayor, just in light of the fact, unless councillor De Souza is not in the meeting and he's left the meeting, an abstentionist casted as voting against, is, is that correct?
Yeah. You can't abstain, not like councillor.
Yeah, you can't abstain, you just vote against.
So unless councillor, unless councillor De Souza is not present in the meeting, he, he is against. So, so, and and unless councillor, unless councillor De Souza is not present in the meeting, um, he he is against.
Through you Mister Mayor, I've just um, I've just messaged councillor De Souza and he is having some trouble and is just on the phone with um, IT at the moment. So I'm just going to give him a quick call if you don't mind.
Um, do we need to wait for his vote then if he's?
It, what is?
Can I, can I just have a look at, do councillors, do you mind?
You've got the vote.
It's ready.
I'm just doing the count, sorry.
You've got a majority already, Mister Mayor.
That's right, and so let me get.
I've got the majority for four, so councillors, I'm going to clear that carried. I don't need councillor De Souza's vote. So councillors, now we move.
Point of order councillor Roberts?
Yes councillor Roberts?
Um, should you just wait till you get uh, a message from councillor De Souza as to which way he's voting?
I'll just ask the GM if she's on the phone to him.
Through you Mister Mayor, uh, just as that motion was passed, I I got off the phone with councillor De Souza and he was voting against.
So that's exactly the same as what's.
Fine.
Okay, thank you. So councillors, I'm going to deal with the merrill minutes now and I commend merrill minute MM eleven slash twenty.
Aye.
Financial support for the, no, sorry, we've done that one. Eleven, uh, MM eleven slash twenty, financial support and donations. And it's to, I think you've got it there, five hundred dollars to World Over In Cancer Day. All those in favour say aye.
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 If they carry.
Aye.
And MM twelve slash twenty, Covid nineteen pandemic advocacy for a local government support package.
Aye.
All those in favour, say aye.
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 Those against, I declare that carried. So now we move on to in Sariaten. And I'll, councillors, you need to bear with me here and I'll ask for challenges and you just need to unmute yourself and yell out. Um, so. So GM is coming later. So I'm going to start at CP seven slash twenty.
Councillor Shuri?
Councillor Shuri, challenge. CP eight slash twenty. Unchallenged. CS twelve slash twenty.
Councillor Andrews.
Challenge, challenge.
Councillor Andrews.
Oh, councillor Loxford.
Um. CS thirteen slash twenty. Unchallenged. Co nineteen slash twenty. Unchallenged. Co twenty slash twenty.
Challenge.
Challenge, uh, is that councillor?
Roberts.
Roberts? Co twenty one slash twenty. Unchallenged. Co twenty two slash twenty. Unchallenged. Oh, that's all. So can someone move the unchallenged items?
I'll second it.
It's unchallenged. Councillor Tervinos has seconded it. So we'll go straight to the first one. Actually, councillors, it's quarter past eight and we can start. I was going to have a break at half past eight. But if you prefer, we can come straight back into these after the break and start afresh. So would you like to take a ten-minute break? And we'll be back at twenty-five past eight. Is that okay?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Remember, twenty-five past eight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Slash twenty, councillor Shuri? You would like to speak?
Yes, I would. Um, thank you Mister Mayor. All I can see of your picture actually is the ceiling. So um, I don't know whether you want to look at that for you, but that's not what I'm moving. I I, first of all, I'm moving the um, recommendation on the business paper.
Seconded.
Thanks, Mary. Um, but.
It's councillor Andrews.
Oh, thank you, thank you Anthony.
Your favourite.
And I would.
That looks perfect today.
I, I am, I I just wanted to thank the staff. I I, you know, when they arrived on my doorstep, I was quite um, surprised, uh, uh, because I wasn't quite sure what what they all were, because it wasn't sort of clear. But I read, I I read through them all and I I really commend the staff. There's an awful lot of work gone into um, to putting those together. So I would like just to commend the staff and move the recommendation on the business paper. That's it.
You're muted Mister Mayor.
You're all mute Mister Mayor.
Yeah, you're muted. I can't hear you, can't Mister Mayor.
You're all mute, Mister Mayor.
No, not in, no longer. I'm here. So councillors, uh, it's moved by councillor Shuri, seconded by councillor Andrews, and all those in favour say aye.
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 Okay.
Aye.
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 So declare that carried. So CS twelve slash twenty, councillor Andrews, you're moving it.
Thanks Mister Mayor.
Seconded Mister Mayor.
Do I have a second up? Councillor Loxford, you're the second up?
I'd like to move the following, um, Mister Mayor, that council, uh, that council consider in future budgets a standalone hydro, hydrotherapy pool at the Des Redford Leisure Centre.
Seconded. Not too late.
I think it's been seconded by councillor.
It's already been councillor Loxford, it's already seconded.
Mister Mayor, I would not like to rule um, this proposal out for a hydrotherapy pool at Des Redford um, Leisure Centre. I think it's important for our community to have a hydrother- hydrotherapy pool um, in our city, and if we can in the future incorporate it in our budget. Um, I would like to um, see a hydrotherapy pool built one day. But I'm not pushing it um, for this year or next year. I think there's other priorities that council needs to do. Other capital works programmes that are more important at the moment, but I I I wouldn't like to see this written off.
Okay, i- is that correct for the uh, motion councillor Andrews, that it would be at Des Redford or just anywhere?
At Des Redford.
Okay, cool, thank you. Councillor Loxford, do you want to speak a second up?
Um, yes, uh, Mister Mayor. Um, I actually uh, would like to add, I um, also had a, uh, was going to move a, an amendment to this motion, um, as well, and um, I think mine is coming up there somewhere. So I guess I would like everyone to see what my proposed amendment was or is. Um, but I too, like councillor Andrews, um, think that the residents of Randwick City deserve and should have a hydrotherapy pool. You know, I note that the report mentions quite a few um, pools that are in other areas. One of them being in the Prince of Wales Private Hospital, which is pretty hard to get into. The other one is also mentioned in the War Memorial, which um, in Waverley, which is also another place that's hard to get into, and they they treat mostly their inpatients first. And if you're a a dedicated um, patient of the physiotherapist there. The other pools mentioned were in Ultimo and the city. So, you know, I feel for our residents that would have to travel all the way to the city, you know, on public transport or who knows where, you know, parking in Ultimo is not that great, nor is it that good in College Street either. So, um, you know, I'd like to incorporate my amendments with councillor Andrews uh, amendment and move that.
They're accepted.
Accepted councillor Andrews?
Councillor Loxford's um, motion be accepted.
Give it two seconds for Mister Kelly to move them up together.
I'd like to go on the speaking list councillor Veach.
Speak now councillor Veach.
Councillor Shuri would like to go on the speaking list as well.
Look, I commend the councillors' uh, concern about the members of our community, you know, with access needs and requirements for swimming. But I just don't think I can support this amendment as much as I would like to. Um, look, the report has shown that it's, the pool is going to cost in excess of twelve million dollars to construct. And the operating costs are going to be over a hundred and eighty thousand dollars per year. Now, we have many, many members in our community uh, with access needs. Actually, a lot of them are in Central Ward in and 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 all the different areas where particularly we have um, our public housing estate. And, you know, I have spoken to many residents who just find it so difficult to access our town centres and facilities uh, in their wheelchairs. They've got real mobility issues. And I think if we're going to, I support spending on uh, access uh, in our community. I think we really need to. But I think there's better ways we could do it that would support many more people to to go about their data bay business, to to access our library, do their shopping. Uh, and maybe some of that money could go towards um, you know, fixing up the the access facilities down at the Malabar Ocean Pool, which has already got some infrastructure there, but which is in need of a refurb. So I just think there's better ways we could send, we could spend uh, that same money.
Malabar's already on the plan to fix, I think.
Yeah, it's a while off, I think.
Councillor Veach, yeah, continue.
I thank you, I I've finished, thank you.
Um, councillor Shuri, and then was that councillor Roberts?
Yes.
Uh, councillor Nielsen. And councillor Nielsen, please.
Okay, so councillor Shuri now, councillor Roberts, and then councillor Nielsen.
And Bowen.
And Bowen, was it? Sorry, sorry councillor Shuri. Did I hear councillor Bowen as well?
You did, yes.
Yep, okay, so uh, now Shuri, Shuri Roberts, Bowen, yeah? Oh, sorry, Shuri, Nielsen, Roberts, Bowen.
I I can't support this um, motion and I I just think the amount of money was astounding, actually. Um, although I understand the need for a hydrotherapy pool, having had a back operation and um, walking up and down in that small pool that um, that Des Redford has and jumping, you know, with the children jumping on top of me, et cetera, was wasn't the most um, fantastic experience. But the amount of money, I just, how can we justify that in our i- in our LGA? And also, as councillor Veach pointed out, the amount of money for for um, the running costs. So basically, I would like to foreshadow a motion that we return to, if if this motion fails, that we return to the original council motion.
Thanks councillor Shuri. Councillor Nielsen?
Uh, yes, mine's a question um, first please to councillor Andrews. How did your motion um, start with the um, future budget? How did you have that worded, please councillor Andrews?
It was worded that council um, consider in future budgets.
The consider, considering future budgets, um, uh, providing a hydrotherapy pool. Could you add that, um, do you think? Because I think that is actually what, I mean personally, um, as Chair of the Access Committee and older persons committee, uh, hydrotherapy pools are very important. I was horrified when they, when I saw the cost of what the proposed hydrotherapy pool was going to be if it was at the Des Redford Leisure Centre. So I agree with um, the concerns about the cost. But that doesn't mean that I don't think it's something that we should be working towards. So I think that if we could be um, coming up with a more suitable budget and that might even be a different location, or it might be even a smaller pool, I'm not quite sure. But I I think we should be working towards providing a hydrotherapy pool uh, in our area.
Just a clarification Mister Mayor, it appears that um, my um, what I moved first has been deleted. It it still should be in there, that council um, um, considering future budgets, a standalone hydrotherapy pool. And then um, councillor Loxford's um, amendment should be under that.
Yes.
Thanks councillor, I did.
So while, um, so what we'll do is councillor Roberts. If, I'll, councillor, uh, councillor Roberts was next and while he's speaking, we'll we'll fix up the screen. So councillor Roberts?
Can I also speak, Mister Mayor, sorry?
Yep, and you'll be after councillor Bowen, councillor Tervinos.
Thank you Mister Mayor. I'd just like to uh, remind councillors that the wording of the of the motion directly addresses the concerns of councillor Veach and uh, councillor Shuri in terms of the costs and the expense. Um, the, it it simply asks council to consider it in the future and to consider ways to do it at a more affordable price. So I think that is, that is reasonable. Uh, and I think it should be supported, because I I personally was uh, lobbied by a by a middle-aged lady who's permanently in a wheelchair. And I think the mayor was at the time as well, and and we we both independently put up a motion regarding this. And uh, she can't basically get into Prince of Wales, um, because she has an ongoing therapy that doesn't require a direct um, referral. So it's very difficult for her to have have therapy. So I think in the long term, as, you know, especially as we have an aging population, you know, it's important we have this facility in in our area, um, in the long term. And frankly, councillors, uh, we all know that there's many ways to skin a cat. And uh, we're simply asking, you know, let's find another way. One way is to spend twelve million dollars. I'm sure there's another way that we could do this to deliver a a a much-needed uh, facility in the future um, for our council area. So I think the the wording addresses the issues on cost and I think it should be supported.
Good on you.
Thank you councillor Roberts. Uh, councillor Bowen?
Yeah, thank you Mister Mayor. Um, look, I'd just echo the sentiments of um, uh, councillor Roberts and the other councillors. I'm aware that, for example, Merrickville Council has a hydrotherapy in their relatively new aquatic centre. Uh, we have a large population, hundred and fifty-odd thousand residents. Um, many of those with um, chronic disabilities that would um, really get a lot of use out of a facility like this. Um, it's, the motion as I read it doesn't, isn't suggesting we're spending any money now, but we we prioritise this as something that we want to do for our community and I think it's, it's good.
Thank you councillor Bowen. Councillor Tervinos?
Thank you Mister Mayor. Look, um, I will be supporting the motion as it's been amended here by councillor Andrews and Loxford now. Um, I don't like writing off any sort of infrastructure that we could look to be building for the future. Uh, to echo what councillor Roberts said earlier, yeah, we are becoming an aging population and the demand for such a facility will only increase uh, as the years go by, as people get older. And uh, with people living a lot longer now, uh, the demand for such a facility will definitely increase. Now, the other thing is, it doesn't necessarily mean that because we support building a hydrotherapy pool that we have to build it ourselves. We may enter into some sort of an arrangement with another operator. There's any number of ways that we could look at financing to build such a facility. So I don't want to write off that element of this proposal either, because it doesn't necessarily mean that uh, because it's going to cost twelve and a half million dollars that we might not be able to do it. We may be able to do it if we look at other alternative ways to uh, to be able to build the structure. So the other point I want to raise is that um, particularly now, uh, at a time where we've all, um, um, you know, we're all going through social isolation and we're going through, um, you know, uh, you know, being locked, being in lockdown. Now more than ever, I'm beginning to realise along with many other people, the importance of getting out and having a good mental health and 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 keeping fit and looking after yourself. Now, uh, I don't, I can't imagine what it would be like for somebody who is uh, permanently in pain to be uh, permanently going through, you know, having these trials and tribulations put before them and not being able to get out and about. I think now more than ever, the mental health and wellbeing of people is i- i- is, you know, really starting to come out. And I think um, no amount of money can uh, you know, can can And I think um no amount of money can uh, you know, can, can, can measure the, the, the social uh uh wellbeing and mental health of a person. And I think if we can build this going forward into the future, I, I, I really think it would be something that our residents and other people from outside the area could utilise. And it's only going to be a growing market. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Stavinos. Um, so councillors, any further speakers? Otherwise I'll put it. So all those in favour say aye.
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 All those against?
Aye.
Yes, me.
I declare that carried. So the next one is CO twenty slash twenty, councillor Roberts. And I'll put your question to the GM. Oh, sorry councillor, sorry councillor Roberts, is this a question or, or moving the investment report?
Yeah, I, I'm gonna move it with a, with a question.
Okay.
Uh, I see the um, the last dot point in the executive summary was quite interesting reading. It said the um, the ability of council to ensure that there is enough cash in the business to operate on a day-to-day basis without facing a liquidity crisis will prove very challenging. So uh, could we just expand maybe on that dot point and just sort of uh ask the director or the GM to sort of give us a general flavour on the current investment environment?
So if you're moving that as well, can I have a second, please?
I'll move it with a question, yeah.
I'll second it, I'll second it, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Stavinos, second it, and can I ask the GM to answer, please?
Yeah. Through, through you, Mr Mayor, as, as council is aware, um, the, the current pandemic that we are experiencing has had economic impacts um both widely in the community and in relation to councils' activities. Um, we do have um uh some of our operations which are currently unable to operate, including Des Renford Centre. Um, and we have provided assistance to our community. We're currently considering our budget. What we're talking about in the investment report is um liquidity and managing our cash. And, and that dot point relates to the fact that our finance staff are having to monitor very closely uh our cash reserves in order to ensure that we're able to draw down on our investments uh when we need to. Our um, our assistance to the community in providing a, a zero interest rate on overdue um rates. We are yet to see the impact of that. Um, but to give council an indication, uh, our quarterly rates revenue would be around the twenty-nine million dollar mark. And when you look at our investments, um, with total investments of sorry, I'm just looking at now, about ninety uh we have total investments with a market value of ninety-seven million dollars. Obviously, those are invested in a number of term deposits and floating rate notes uh with different maturity dates. So uh our staff will be monitoring very um closely when those maturity dates uh do come up, how we uh manage the timeframes in relation to our investments and um ensuring that where possible, we're not drawing on those floating rate notes before their maturity. Uh, does that answer your question, councillor Roberts?
Yes, thank you. That's, that's great. Thank you. Appreciate that.
So councillors, uh, uh, sorry, councillors Stavinos, would you like also to ask, answer, ask a question?
No, I think uh the concerns that councillor Roberts raised have been addressed and I'm uh I was actually gonna ask a similar question, so that's good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So councillors, I'll put it, all those in favour say aye.
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 All those against?
Aye.
I declare that carried. So now we move on to the motions. Um, and the first motion is NM twenty-four slash twenty. Notice a motion from councillor Bowen, Randwick Council.
I'll second it, thank you.
Norm, Norman Nob Hill to the Randwick Community and Coogee SLSC, and councillor Stavinos has seconded it. Uh councillor Bowen, would you like to speak on your motion?
Yeah, thanks, Mr Mayor. Um, look councillors, I had the very good fortune many, many years ago when I was the mayor to meet uh Norm Nob Hill. And that was in the um, the course of uh getting the campaign together to support the building of the um monument for the fallen lifesaver down there at Coogee, which has become such a landmark. And I was really, you know, it's one of, you get many privileges as a councillor and, and I suppose perhaps even a few more as mayor, but um one of them was to meet Norm. Uh, and, you know, a very dignified man who had um uh, you know, volunteered his services for his country, uh something that we just celebrated last weekend in a really unique way, actually, I think, just as an aside, um, uh given the, the pandemic. But um Norm was a, a Coogee guy through and through. And when you think of it, he was a member of Coogee Surf Club for over sev- for seventy-five years. That, that's an incredible uh achievement. I, I suspect this probably be a bit longer than that. Um, but anyway, he, he passed away recently. Um, he enjoyed remarkably good health for most of his life. Uh, and he'd, he'd served with the um, the, the Royal Australian Air Force overseas. Plenty of young men did that and plenty of them didn't come home. And Norm had uh said very pro- um profoundly, I recall, uh in the course of working up the support for the fallen lifesaver. So when he looked at the honour boards of Coogee Surf Clubs, that he, he didn't see names, he, he saw faces. If you look at his story, he's, he was involved with um the uh Randwick Rugby Club and he was obviously involved in the surf club for a very long period of time. So I think if we could honour um his contribution, he's really the last of quite a remarkable generation of Australians, really marked by service and, and sacrifice for their community. Things we've come to understand, I think, a little more deeply in these past few months uh and, and to appreciate more. Um, so I know, Mr Mayor, we had a chat about what form the recognition might take and we'd obviously be consulting with the club. Um, and, and given that the club is undergoing a renovation, there might be some scope to honour Norm uh in, in the course of the new works that it, that uh to happen at the club. So anyway, I, I just asked for your support, councillors. Um, he's a great community man. Uh, his life is emblematic of, emblematic of what we celebrate at Randwick and I'd ask for your support.
Thank you councillor Bowen. Councillor Stavinos has seconded it?
Uh, Mr Mayor, um, I did not know this person. But what I will say is this, anybody who gives seventy-five years of service to their local community and has served their nation deserves recognition. And I applaud uh councillor Bowen for bringing forward this motion because uh, you know, the least we could do is honour people like this who have given tirelessly to the community. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Stavinos. And councillor Bowen, yes, we have spoken and, yes, there'll be uh things in the works and we'll work out a, a, with the club itself, under their recommendation, the most appropriate way of um benefiting his life. So councillors, I put it, the motion to you, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
All those against, say nay. I declare that carried. Um, next is NM twenty-five slash twenty.
Happy to second that.
Take note that, oh, they've already been joined, so.
Yeah, we've joined, we're joined together, yes.
Just reading the screen, so yeah, NM twenty-six slash twenty, joined together?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, thank you. So I, I um.
I'll withdraw my second then.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks councillor.
And, and councillor Hamilton and Stavinos, so if you see the screen now, that's the way you want it written up, yeah?
Yeah, look, I'm hap- even though my name appeared first in the paper, I'm happy for councillor Hamilton to be the mover and I'll be the second, no problem.
Thanks councillor Stavinos. Um, so whatever, councillor through its social media communications, um, can you just scroll down, please? Yep, and keep going, oh. Okay, so you've got through the social media communication, local real estate, and then bring back a report, feasibility of introducing an additional two free on-call. I think it would be also important to include the background, because both of our backgrounds are extremely similar in that we recognise um, you know, residents now have additional time and unfortunately under the current circumstances to do some clean-out. And the clean-outs are great because it's, it's great to get rid of unwanted items and the like. It's the illegal dumping, so it's the, the dumping, the unwanted items, any space on the nature strip and out front of homes without doing a, a call-out. So that's why I um wanted to join with councillor Stavinos's motion because he's talking about, you know, promoting education and noting that yesterday we had our one annual clean-out. And it was, I think, really positive to see so many people uh did know that that was um the case. And so we saw lots of um rubbish and unwanted items put out on the nature strips over the weekend. So it's a really good thing that people do actually know that this one uh scheduled clean-up is available to them. But I do agree with him that it's, that we should be promoting it a little bit more that there are from um you know, you know, last year, two thousand and nineteen, we agreed to five free on-call. And what I'm asking for is that we just bring back a report on the feasibility of two addition to the five. So that would mean we would have seven on-call household clean-ups for the rest of this year. And I think that, you know, while there's some positive signs that we might be returning to work, if we are not returning to work and people continue to um clean up and, and get rid of some unwanted items, we are, we give them the opportunity to call in and use up one of their um household clean-ups. And if there's seven of them, then fantastic, we're hopefully, someone in the street can call up and get the rubbish removed from outside their home or even one, you know, next door. So that's all I'm uh thinking about. I'm thinking about the fact that we didn't foresee this as a council. You know, last year we thought five free on-call and one scheduled would be great. But no one knew that this was going to happen. People would be home uh all day, every day, with the ability to conduct a, a household clean-up, give them something to do, that's what's happening. We did it. Um, a lot of people in our street are doing it. So it is definitely increasing. Um, it, I think it will continue. And, and I do believe that after a scheduled clean-up, people who missed the clean-up think that they can still throw something out. And so we actually see a little bit of a legacy um from the scheduled clean-up in our streets a few days after and even a week after the scheduled one. So it's just those people that don't understand that what happened on that day that led to lots of piles of, you know, wood and, and items and, and even clothing and that that was the result of a scheduled council clean-up. They then still throw some things out the front, thinking it's going to be picked up. So if we do a combined education and an increase on the household clean-ups, eh, I think that those two um items combined would help just alleviate some of the, the unsightly uh piles that we see, you know, appearing all over Randwick.
Thank you councillor Hamilton. Councillor Stavinos, do you want to speak a second then?
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. Uh, look, I'd like to uh thank councillor Hamilton for putting forward her motion as well. I'm glad uh that we've both uh considered to put the motions together because they are interrelated. Um, with the pandemic and the lockdown having us all confined to homes over the last month, it has become quite evident that there is a lot more rubbish uh being put out for collection. And a lot of it has to do with the fact that we are working from home and the traditional spring clean has now become the clean now. You know, where people are now putting out their rubbish, uh, you know, six months earlier than what they probably anticipated. Uh, and now with council having put forward the uh proposal in November last year to have the extra clean-ups, what's become obvious is that a lot of residents still don't understand the fact that we do have five clean-ups available to them, not including, not including the one scheduled one that um, that we have. So uh I think it's important that residents understand the uh, the waste management programme that we do have. And I can tell you, I believe that we have probably the best waste management programme in New South Wales. So we should be proud and we should be putting it out there and letting residents know that we have this great system and that they should be taking advantage of it. Now, um, the other thing is, I have noticed that there is quite a substantial amount of dumped rubbish being put out. People are just throwing rubbish out and they're adding to the piles that have been put out by other people. And I think the difference between a scheduled pick-up and dumped rubbish is a phone call. Now, if we can educate our residents into the, understanding the processes and knowing how they can schedule the clean-ups, that would be great for our staff. It would save time, it would save money and it would give our staff uh, uh, you know, more efficiency and, and, and be more effective in collecting the rubbish. Now, the reason I've also included local real estate agents is because they are responsible for letting out any number of properties in our city. Now, local real estate agents can play a pivotal role in promoting our waste management programme because they are the port of call when it comes to letting out properties. And when properties do go vacant, well, they can advise their uh tenant, the tenants and residents, well, would you like to give the council a call? How about you give them a call and you book the clean-up? I think it's so important and um really, uh, I commend our, our waste management programme. I commend uh Todd Clark, our Director of City Services and Bushy and all the people who are doing a tremendous job. You could really see uh the city now is, you know, I mean, it's, it's sparkling. They're doing a great job in trying to, you know, pick up all the rubbish. And whenever I've put in a request or residents have contacted me, putting in a request for a pick-up, the rubbish has been attended to in a, in, in a very prompt manner. And I think it's so, it's commendable and I really asked the councillors tonight to support this motion, put up on myself and councillor uh Hamilton, because I think it has great merit and I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Stavinos. Any more discussion? I think I'll just put it then, councillors. All those in favour say aye.
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 Against?
Aye.
I declare that carried. Um, the next, next most of motion is NM twenty-seven slash twenty. Notice a motion from councillor Veach, concerns regarding extensions of state government planning powers.
I, I would like to second that, councillor Parker.
Councillor Parker has seconded it and councillor Veach, you can speak on a motion.
Uh, thank you, Mr Mayor. Look, there's been obviously been a huge amount of community discussion effect from the COVID nineteen pandemic. There, there's absolutely no doubt about it and that is not up for debate. But I do not believe, and I don't believe um our community thinks that that means that it's time to take the handbrake um off our planning control. So I'll take myself off um back onto the video. I've had um many, many people get in touch with me um regarding this motion. What we have seen is people like, ministers like um Andrew Constance saying that rather than uh reassessing the merits of projects, we should move harder and faster to fast-track billions in transport project to create jobs and stimulate the economy. Councillors, if we want to stimulate the economy, councils, including Randwick councils and others all across New South Wales, do shovel-ready projects uh on their books, ready to go ahead. And if the New South Wales Government is looking uh to stimulate the economy through construction, um, they could certainly be turning to their local governments uh to see what we have on our books rather than fast-tracking uh unwanted um developments that will not be going through due process. Our Environmental Planning and Assessment Act uh has a number of objects. But one of those objects is to provide increased opportunity for community participation in environmental planning and assessment. And unfortunately, that community participation will completely go out the window. The other thing that will go out the window is the necessity to provide environmental impact statements um and the, and to allow those to go on exhibition and for the community to provide uh to present submissions on the environmental impact statements. Um, the new COVID nineteen uh orders do require that the Minister uh for Planning consult with the Minister for Health and Medical Research and bec- and remain reasonably satisfied that the order is necessary to protect the health, safety and welfare of members of the public. The problem is, is that there is no objective test of what is necessary to protect the health, safety and welfare of the public. It's only the minister that needs to be satisfied. So there's no checks and balances. Um, and no legal challenge to a ministerial approval for an inappropriate development could be mounted. Um, there's just no provision for that. So there's a whole lot of holes in this uh in this, and there's a lot of community concern. Um, some people, and I, I do thank um councillor Parker for and, and others in the community for bringing to my attention um an update that came through on this today. So the first lot of. So the first lot of fast track assessments uh went on exhibition today. And actually, a lot of them aren't too bad. There's a lot of new schools and public housing. Um, I still believe that um, you know, the relevant processes should be adhered to. Um, but what did uh draw my attention was the fact that one of those developments. Is uh a big block of student accommodation on Doncaster Avenue. And I really don't think um residents in Doncaster Avenue. Uh, and elsewhere in West Ward are really going to be very happy about seeing uh that particular development on this list. And I will, and I have certainly started to uh notify them of that. So councillors, um, let's kind of urge the government to make uh, just make appropriate spending on development. On, on, on uh, on projects that have gone, already gone through that community uh process. Council will certainly not, I don't believe our council will be uh. Making any changes to our community consultations for the projects we plan to do. Um, and and we should hold our state governments to the same standards. Um, so please, I, I hope you can support this motion. Um, and so uh developments continue to go through the appropriate uh control. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Veach, councillor Parker. Councillor Parker, before you speak, can I just check? Do councillor Singh and councillor Luxford want to ask a question or was I, am I still on delay for the chats?
I'm right now, uh, Mr. Mayor.
You're on delay.
Okay, so councillor Parker, you can speak.
Uh, thank you, thank you, sorry, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I have a suggested um additional point uh to include in the motion. Um, it would be an additional point to number four. Um, and would read, it would uh be the final point and would read. Expresses concern over the New South Wales government's recently announced planning acceleration program. Having the potential to deprive communities of the opportunity to have reasonable input into major developments. Um, the reason why I would suggest um that uh this inclusion is of significance. Um, look, councillor Veach um has broadly um spoken of uh many of the issues. With some of the announcements in relation to the planning space in relation to the COVID nineteen response. I, I think the intentions um of the New South Wales government's response um have been broadly um acceptable. However, I, I, I do actually believe i- in line with what councillor Veach has mentioned. That um they have left themselves um extraordinary latitude in relation to how they um may choose to run the planning system. Um, in, in particular, and we, and we actually earlier today had. Um, a, a, a pretty uh decent discussion around the broad powers of ten point uh seventeen. Of the um, you know, of, of the Environmental Planning and Assessment Act. Um, which was recently amended um by uh COVID nineteen legislation. Um, and, and, and why I wanted to add uh the final point is, wh- while I think uh that the current context. Um, does obviously need um greater latitude. Um, a, a crisis does not mean necessarily that normal processes and scrutiny should be ignored. Um, and if anything, it means that they, they become more essential because there are actually fewer people watching. Um, and, and the inclusion of the final point, I actually think is also um quite significant. Because um communities have, at this point in time. Um, the le- the, the less, the less um ability to actually make import uh into major developments that they've had. Um, uh, in terms of being distracted and looking at other things. And, and, and if we are fast tracking anything, uh, they need to be um very, very vital. And my concern is that any inclusion on a list of uh major developments or major projects effectively represents tacit approval. Uh, by the department. So look, I, I, I'd just like to include that language to express council's concern um over uh that process. And, and to suggest that ca- this is something which council should be watching um very closely.
Thank you councillor Parker. Anyone else would like to speak? Um, councillors?
Um, I'm sorry.
I'd like to say a few words.
Oh, yeah, I just, just, sorry councillor Tavirinos and councillor Veach, I just want to say again, uh, am I coming out funny again?
No, may I just, councillor Parker has asked if I would be happy to include that point.
That last point, would you like?
Yes, I'm happy to accept it.
Thank you. And I was just gonna say, councillors, I, I, on my phone, I'm just getting, at this moment, people asking for questions. So really, a- again, I don't know if it's delayed, so please just, you're gonna have to ask verbally that you'd like to speak. So I can't rely on the chat. So councillor Tavirinos, I heard your voice.
I'd like to speak, councillor Shuri.
Okay, so councillor Tavirinos, councillor Shuri and councillor Mattson.
Look, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, thank you councillor Tavirinos.
In principle, I agree with most of the sentiments that councillor Veach has uh in her motion tonight. What I would like to do though is amend it to ask that point three be deleted. In relation to the extension of permissible construction hours. Has the potential to severely disrupt compulsory work and learn from home arrangements. I'd like that deleted. And I would also like uh part four, bullet point number two. Noting the minister's order allowing extended building and demolition work on weekends and public holidays. Request the New South Wales government provide extra funding for local councils to monitor building sites. During the extended work hours to monitor the observance of social distancing as well as noise emitted from these sites on the weekend. Now, they're the only two points that I don't like in this motion. I agree with the majority of it, but the reason I uh, I want those two uh points removed is a very good one. Now, I agree that the minister shouldn't have total power. When it comes to development applications and making decisions on uh planning. Here we are at the moment, we're putting together a very comprehensive L E P and D C P. In consultation with our residents and to put together a housing strategy. And the last thing I'd like to see is the minister for planning being able to override those controls. We've put in all this time, we've spent years putting these plans together. And the last thing I would want to see is for the minister for planning to be able to override those controls. At the fast track developments that go against the controls uh that we've put in place through our L E P and D C P. However, I have a problem with part three and bullet point two of part four. Which prevents construction outside of normal operating hours. Now, under the current economic and social conditions that we are facing as a result of the coronavirus. Many people have lost their jobs. And the only industry that hasn't been as badly affected as others is the construction industry. Now, in New South Wales alone, this industry employs over six hundred and fifty thousand people. And the last thing I want to see happen is to see the hours of the construction industry revert back to the normal hours that they worked before. And see these workers lose their jobs and see the economy taking another hit. The construction in- industry is a litmus, a litmus for the Australian economy. When our construction industry is booming, the, the, the economy is doing well. And this is one of the few industries that's able now to operate without the restrictions. Now, we're all making sacrifices at this time, all of us are going through a hard time. We're not able to exercise, we're not able to go out, we're not able to do the things that we used to do before. Now, a little bit of extra noise outside of uh normal working hours is something that we should tolerate for the sake of the nation. And keeping people in work. It's only for a short period of time, and if the noise limits exceed certain uh levels, then our rangers. Have the authority to go in and shut down these sites, you know, if they're not compliant. So really, I agree in principle with everything that's been said and put before me. But the, those two points I don't agree with. And I would ask that they be removed for the purposes of the uh, of the debate.
Councillor Veach?
Uh, no, I'm sorry, I cannot accept that amendment.
Oh, that request, um, councillor Tavirinos, do you want to make it an amendment?
I would like to put that amendment forward. Uh, I would like the motion as it is, remove number three and remove four, uh, bullet point number two of part four.
Do I have a seconda for the amendment?
Is he not foreshadowing the amendment? It's a foreshadowed surely, Mr. Mayor.
No, it's an actual amendment. Is that right councillor Tavirinos?
Correct.
So I need a seconda to the amendment.
Do I have anybody seconding it? No.
Um, so I don't have a seconda, so I'll go back to the original. Sorry, sorry councillor Tavirinos, so I go back to the original motion. Anyone else would like to speak on the motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, uh, sorry, sorry, you were next anyway, councillor Mattson, sorry. Oh, sorry, 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 councillor Shuri was, sorry councillor.
Sorry councillor Mattson. Um, I, I really worry about the changes to the, to the planning uh act when, for, for Little Bay. I mean, that was the first thing I thought about when um I, I read about these things. And I am rea- I, I'm really concerned that the large development at Little Bay could just be. Completely taken out of our hands. And um suddenly we have a large development down there of which we know. Um, council hasn't, doesn't want and um the local residents don't want. Um, the other thing is, in response to councillor Tavirinos um wanting to um. Continue with the hours and that it, that it's just a little, you know, inconvenience. Um, we've already seen the problem with down at the Montefiore site, which these developers have pushed the limits at every single. Um, point. And now they've had the time taken, they've got free rein with the time, they've got. The residents down there are going mad because they are at home, their children are trying to study, they're, they're trying to work at home. And this noise goes on constantly. It's not a little noise councillor Tavirinos, you should go down there. And our rangers do not have the right to stop it, they can't. So that's, that's absolutely wrong. So um I really, this, the changing of these planning powers is really, really worrying. And um I think we need to stand up and be count, excuse me, stand up and be counted. And, you know, that we are against these. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Shuri. councillor Mattson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Look, um, I agree with what uh councillor Shuri has said and councillor Veach has said. Uh, look, we've come through a torturous process to achieve a council position on the. Kendington to Kingsford Anzac Parade corridor, K to K. That took a lot of time, a lot of money, a lot of angst, but we've got a resolution and a position in place. It would be disastrous if a minister that was not um in line with that thinking. Suddenly had some sort of adrenaline rush and decided to do some sort of Trump-like approval of a planning proposal. We know that the developers in that area have put forward twenty four, twenty five story tower propositions. Uh, we know that because they went to their planning panel. But if this, if this process is further weakened against the councils, then. I, I think we stand to lose a lot. This is very much in line with what councillor Shuri just said about Little Bay. Uh, look, I also remember during the previous, um, during the economic crisis, global economic crisis. The then government, Labour government, uh, didn't have a problem working with councils. They went straight to the councils and uh gave money as stimulus and straight to the councils. I think that establishes that when we've got the money, we can build things. And I, I would argue the state government should be taking a lesson from that.
Thank you councillor Mattson. Any further speakers?
Yeah, I'd like to say a few words if I wouldn't miss it.
Councillor Parker? Yep, sure.
Uh, Bowen actually.
Sorry councillor.
That's all right. I think you should apologize to councillor Parker.
You've got that youthful abuse, councillor Bowen.
Well, you know, I.
I'm all right with that one.
Um, look, I, I, yeah, I support the um, the motion. And uh, you know, as someone who's seen what um the state government has delivered to our area over. You know, over a decade now, um, I'm extremely uh concerned that uh this. You know, the, the very important work that needs to be done to keep the economy going, which we all agree on. Um, could uh be used as a bit of a, you know, as cover for inappropriate development. If I put it in n- nice terms. Um, and, you know, I think councillor Mattson. Uh, whilst of course it's a matter of longstanding record, we haven't agreed on the K to K. But I, I, he makes a good point uh about how previously the government. Uh, the previous federal government, when we had the last sort of economic shock of ten years ago or so. The G F C came to us and was willing to fund our projects. And, you know, that's a very different um uh beast than what's being, being laid out here. So I think we, unfortunately, history tells us that we're right to be skeptical. We, we're right to be uh hesitant about um these proposals. And so I think it's a good motion and, and we should support it. And the other one I would just add slightly off topic, I mean, same with the buses in this area. Uh, I'm concerned that we're gonna see, when hopefully this pandemic is over. Uh, we're gonna see some changes that we weren't expecting and, and weren't asked about, didn't want. Thanks.
Thank you councillor Bowen. Any further speakers? Councillor Veach, do you want to um close the argument?
Um, look, I think I've spoken and, and many other people have spoken and covered lots of different points, so I reserve my right.
Can I just, can I just say just a quick thing that, sorry, I'll support the motion wholeheartedly. But um, just wanna, just in regards to um what councillor Tavirinos said in regards to um. Hours of operation, for example, like um, just picture somebody that's already, you know, in these difficult times going through. You know, real, a lot of anxiety, they're already depressed, they're stressed. And usually they can cop building works up till say five P M and maybe three P M on a Saturday. Now, picture it now seven days a week, the Sunday that they looked forward to, to where they could probably get their sanity back. Has been taken away as well. So like, we've just got to think that the, the home environment sometimes is where you go for peace. And when you've got constructions that are just going non-stop, you know, and the hours it's regulated at the moment. People put up with, but they, they suffer a lot with as well. Because if you've got a construction site, for example, that, that's breaking rock. Uh, and that's gonna go for a period of two months or three months. When you live with that noise and you live with it for longer than you have to, or longer than you've already accepted to. Mental health cuts in and a lot of people will suffer as a result. Thanks.
Thank you ca- councillor De Roshan. So councillors, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Aye again. Sorry. Can I just ask the nays again?
No.
No.
So I just said those two, so I declare that carried. Um, the next one is. N M thirty slash twenty, notice a motion from councillor Mattson. Two hundred and fifty resistance, gageal, physical people, sovereign elders group support. Councillor Mattson?
I'd like to second it.
Uh, councillor Neeson as a seconda and councillor Mattson, would you like to speak?
Yeah, certainly. Um, look, this process on Waverley council is being championed by councillor Wykanak. He's an indigenous councillor. It refers to um an area of pain in the indigenous community. It goes back um quite a few years, we all know it. A Waverley council is trying to get an objective understanding of the history recorded. To bring forward quieter voices that have been perhaps overlooked and have definitely been overlooked. Um, the secret instructions such as they are, they're not much of a secret anymore, they've been out for a number of years. But basically, um, it was given to James Cook. Uh, a series of things that he should have abided by. And that has been taken to be an indication that something went wrong with the early colonization of Australia. Many would say that it should not have gone forward as it did. What I'm asking for is that Randwick City Council at this point make no particular, take no particular position. But do identify with what our neighbouring council is doing. And that is why I've used the um, the word liaise, that we see where they go with it. And we come back to ourselves and we report to our own community, our own councillors. What our neighbouring council has come to. There will be events uh by the indigenous community, they were uh planned for April this year or a bit later. But they've had to be put off for the coronavirus and that must be very frustrating to the indigenous community. And it's now, it's. And it's now, it's another indication that this virus has the potential to rob us of transparency and accountability. I would urge support for it. I think it's a very mild motion, it's just noting what our sister council is doing on an issue that's very pertinent, very pertinent to our Indigenous community and to any non-Indigenous member of Australia. Something was very, there was a very painful event. We need to come to an objective understanding of it and at least an objective recording of it in our history. So I would ask.
Thank you councillor Mattson, councillor Nielsen, a second up?
Yes, thank you, thank you, Mayor. I support councillor Mattson's intended motion, but I actually wanted slightly different wording. And I've emailed it to David Kelly, I hope he can put it up on the screen for us now. And basically what I'm saying is that council officers, yeah, here we've got it here, council's officers liaise with the Gadjigal Resistance Resist 250, First Nation Sovereign Tribal Elders, council in the eastern suburbs over proposed activities associated with marking 250 years of Aboriginal resistance since Lieutenant Cook landed at Kamé Botany Bay on 29th of April 1770, claiming to have made a geographical discovery. So perhaps we could add that as a second point, councillor Mattson, because I think it's really important. Waverley Council, I understood, was going to do this to actually liaise with this group to find out how they were proposing to commemorate the event and so on. So would you be happy to have that as a point two?
Councillor Mattson?
Sorry, still getting used to it. Look councillor, I don't particularly have a problem with it, but perhaps other councillors might have a problem with it. The way I constructed my motion, it's to take a non-political or a non-divisive look at this issue. I have discussed it with councillor Waikannak, he seems happy with it, seemed enthusiastic with it. While understanding exactly what you want to say, if it's, I would suggest that you put the amendment to my motion and see if it fails or succeeds on the votes.
Okay, can I just clarify too councillor Mattson, that I understood that this was what was actually carried at the Waverley Council meeting?
There have been two, sorry, I'll just treat that as a question through the mayor, if the mayor is agreeable to.
Go ahead councillor Mattson.
There have been two meetings of the council, one on the 21st of March and a more recent one on the 20th of February. So it's.
Yeah.
So I don't understand what you're asking me, I'm sorry.
No, sorry, this is the most recent meeting, the, the meeting that was held in April, I should say.
Yes, I understand that there was a meeting there as well. Look, I, I can just suggest that if you feel that you want a direct involvement by this council, that you should put it up as an amendment and test it on the floor of the chamber.
And can I just address the point too, to, to you councillor Mattson, that I'm really only trying to get more information so that it's, it's a question of liaising with the, with the group to find out more information. So it's not necessarily saying that we have to do more at this stage, other than to find out more information. And then as appropriate, the officers can recommend to us, to council, that we do more.
Look, I understand what you're saying, but I'm trying to move with diplomacy and what could be easily flagged by conservative media voices as a council that's taken an excessively political line.
Well, I understood that it was passed unanimously at Waverley Council.
All I can suggest councillor is that you move it as an amendment and I'll probably support it.
So are you happy for me moving it as an amendment, so it becomes point two?
Quite happy for you to move that as an amendment, councillor.
Is there a second amendment?
So you're moving it as amendment councillor Nielsen?
I am, so it would become point through to the motion.
Okay, and do I have a second up for the amendment?
I'll second it, I'll second it councillor Veach.
Councillor Veach?
I support councillor Mattson's motion, but I have no issue with the amendment, so I'm happy to second it, I hope that's okay councillor.
I just clarified that the amendment is not negating councillor Mattson's motion. That the intention is that the amendment continues on from the original motion. So the motion becomes, the next paragraph just becomes point two.
That was my understanding that we retain councillor Mattson's motion with your additional point, so would we incorporate that?
Yes, correct.
As I said, I will vote with your amendment councillor.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing we've sorted that out, so councillors, do you mind if I just put it then? As is, with the extra point?
Mr. Mayor, I want to say.
Oh, sorry, councillor Stavreinos, go ahead, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Look, Mr. Mayor, history is something that can't be rewritten, whether we agree with it or disagree with it. History is documented so we can learn from the past and correct the errors of our ways and right any wrongdoing. Every country around the world has a history and every nation has either been settled, conquered and subjected to any number of historical events. What this motion is trying to do tonight is rewrite the history of settlement in Australia to suit a political narrative and is aimed at bringing about political correctness to something that happened 250 years ago. We could all be here tonight talking about the various settlements, conquests and wars that have occurred through history with every nation playing a part in shaping the world that we have today. The important point I'm trying to make to make, is that we can't rewrite the events of yesteryear just to suit a political agenda. But we can learn from our mistakes and that's what this great nation known as Australia is doing and has been doing for quite some time. We recognise that Australia had an indigenous population for 40,000 years before white men arrived by boat in 1770. And we have, we have and continue to correct the wrongdoings of the past because as humans, we learn from our past. That's what history's all about. This motion is nothing short of political rhetoric, attempting to recreate and rewrite the events that occurred over 250 years ago. Those events, whether we like it or not, cannot be changed, they happen. And what we should be doing is moving forward. We shouldn't be trying to generate division in our community by bringing forward motions like this to try and attempt to rewrite what happened back in April 1770. So on that note, I won't be supporting this motion.
Thank you councillor Stavreinos, I think councillor Mattson, you, you had one to speak?
Just speaking to the motion, look, to the amendment, sorry, look, councillor Stavreinos's heart seems to be in the right place. He's arguing for a reconciliation, but you cannot have reconciliation without transparency. You cannot have that reaching out and achieving of a healing process if you do not face the actual facts of what happened. And one of the facts is that Captain Cook was given a set of instructions, which some would argue, and myself included, do not seem to have been implemented by him.
Do I have any further speakers?
Yes, may I speak as the second up?
Yep, sorry.
Look, thank you councillor Mattson and also councillor Nielsen for this motion and amendment. Look, tomorrow, April 29, is actually the anniversary of Cook's landing in, in Botany Bay. Now, I, I'm aware that there were really some really large public assem-, peaceful public assemblies that were well over a year in the planning, which were, which was intended to involve members of the Indigenous community, not just locally, but from all over Australia. There were some very large, you know, assemblies being planned, not to celebrate, but as councillor Mattson said, to, to show that ongoing continuity and to tell the truth of what the effect of colonisation has been on our Indigenous communities. We are extremely fortunate to have our wonderful Bajjigal community in La Perouse who have had that continuous connection and culture for thousands of years. And we're, we're so fortunate. And as anyone who's been down to the black markets and, and, and seen all the activity there and spoken to the elders, I think it's really significant that, that council recognises their culture, their community on this particular occasion. And I really would urge all council, you know, it's actually important, probably more than anything else, if we could get a unanimous result on this. I don't think it is the political agenda. We have a living community here in the Randwick LGA. And I think if we don't get in and support this motion, it will, it will really be very disappointing. So I, I hope people can take it simply as a recognition of our local community. The fact that there has been issues and, and I urge you to support this motion.
Thank you councillor Veach, councillor Roberts, yep, go ahead.
Hang on, I actually put up a comment in the chat.
I, 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 sorry councillor Hamilton, I, I've said it a few times tonight, the chats are way behind. So just, as councillor Roberts just did, just, just say a name and I'll get to you, but I just can't rely on the chat. So I'll go councillor Roberts and then councillor, councillor Hamilton.
Sure.
Is that okay? Yep, sure, councillor Roberts, go ahead.
I can't support the amendment. I, I'm open to supporting the original motion as worded, in the spirit of councillor Mattson saying that he was in good faith, trying to keep it non-political. And I, I believe that. However, this amendment has, the way I read this, has made it political. And it's, it doesn't acknowledge all sides of this very important issue. And tomorrow will mark the arrival in Australia of what was a voyage and absolute triumph of scientific discovery and exploration and courage. So there's, there's more than one side to this issue. And the effect of colonisation also had some positive effects. So true reconciliation occurs when you acknowledge the good on, from both sides and you acknowledge the bad from both sides and we move forward from there. This amendment clearly puts a mark in the sand, the colonisation was bad, full stop. And I, I don't agree with that. And, and thank God, it was the Poms. If the French had, had taken this place over, we would be sending our MPs to Paris, just like they do in New Caledonia, just like they do in Tahiti. So, you know, who threw the first stone? When, when are the British going to start having to go at Rome 2,000 years ago, when they took over the British Islands? You know, where, where do you start, where do you finish, where do you stop your grievances? Let's move forward together as a nation, find out the good in everything, find out the bad in everything, acknowledge it all and move forward. This amendment doesn't do that, I can't support it.
Thank you councillor Roberts, councillor Hamilton?
Oh, look, here, here, councillor Roberts took words a lot out of my mouth, I thought it was great. It's, it's true, I think that the original motion definitely had a, a nice soft apolitical approach to it. And yes, we're recording history and we're collecting history and we're notating history and storing it for future reference. The, what concerns me and why I won't support the amendment and the, the motion itself is the politicise, the politicalisation, I can't even get the word out. But it's Resist 250, the, you know, that organisation wants to wreck the, you know, the endeavour and, and its track around Australia as, you know, that's a celebration of what councillor.
But he didn't do it, he didn't circumvent.
Now that, as a, yeah, okay, I'm just going to keep on going because I think that.
Councillor Hamilton, yep, continue please.
Yeah, losing their heads over this is always going to ruin the argument. And I think that it's, it is about history and it's not about one history over another. It's about the whole of history, I mean, these things happened. We can't say that it didn't happen and we can't push it under the rug, we can't try to push it away. But when we, as a, you know, a group of councillors, representatives of the entire community, not, not just one particular group in our community, when we decide to align ourselves with an organisation, we need to look at what, what's the motives of that organisation and can it be polarising? And I think that, you know, Resist 250 movement is polarising. And it is something that I think that we should steer away from. And we have a very, you know, solid connection with the Indigenous in our community. We have briefings on how we can solidify that connection, in, in, you know, include them, excuse me, in, in decisions, decisions that we make on many things. And so if we say that we're going to align ourselves with a resistance movement that wants to wreck a, a wooden replica of the endeavour and wants to do any number of things to, you know, basically act out the, the horror of what had happened in the past, in, right now, then I, I just think that that sends a really strong and damaging message to people who are open to all of history. And as children learn and grow and make up their own minds, I think that we should make sure that the full histori-, historical account from all sides is available to them. And we can't burn things and we can't, you know, rubbish things and lock things away and not allow our children and their children to read the full history. I think councillor Stavreinos made a very good point that we can't deny the history and we should make sure that it's available to all of us, good, bad or otherwise. And so I don't agree with this motion, as I said, and I don't agree with the amendment. I won't be aligning myself with a, a resistance movement.
And councillor Hamilton, any other further speakers? So councillor Nielsen, do you want to speak on the amendment? Before I put it?
I don't think I can, can I, it's an amendment. To close the debate?
Okay.
But I just think it's very sad, I mean, I'm a specialist in colonial history and I just think it's very sad that we do not make a positive effort to try and find out more information and find out the truth and do more about what others have been saying. We should be joining both sides and looking at the good in both sides. Well, I don't think why this particular amendment stops that. But I'm happy if you'd like to just withdraw it and we can just go back to the original one.
No, no, I think let's vote on, no, let's vote on this, let's vote on the amendment.
If you want to remove it, that's up to you, I suppose councillor Nielsen.
Well, I totally believe it, so I'm happy for it to go ahead, could you just vote it, please?
Okay.
I think you may withdraw it.
No, let's vote on it.
If it's withdrawn, you cannot vote on it, so we just need to figure out whether.
Neither can we draw.
I am not going to withdraw it, I'm agreeing with the person who seconded the motion, so, the amendment. So we're voting on the amendment and then if the amendment's carried, the whole thing's carried, if the amendment's lost, we go back to the original motion. So let's put the amendment, please.
Okay, so I'm putting the amendment now, all those in support of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against?
No.
I'm, I'm going to call a division because honestly I can't tell between the two. So again, I'll go around the table. Councillor Hamilton?
Against.
Councillor Shuri?
For.
Councillor Nielsen?
For.
Councillor Veach?
For.
Councillor Stavreinos?
Against.
Councillor Luxford?
Against.
Councillor Parker?
Or.
Councillor Singh?
For.
Councillor Andrews?
Against.
Councillor Bowen?
For.
Councillor Mattson?
For.
Councillor Roberts?
Against.
Councillor De Rocha?
Against.
Now councillors, councillor D'Souza has. Now councillors, councillor D'Souza has had to leave us a short while ago, so there's no vote there. So he's left the meeting for tonight. And so there's the mayor that's for, so just check the numbers. So I declare that carried. So the amendment now becomes the motion. Now we'll vote on the motion. Do you want me to go around the table or is anyone changing their votes? And I'll just carry on to the next one. So all those in favour of the, now the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And those against?
I think you should call a division again, Mister Mayor.
No.
A division needs to be called.
I'll call a division, but is anyone actually changing their vote before I have to read out the names?
No, I'm not changing, I'm not changing the vote, no.
I'm not changing.
So, Mister Kelly, can you just copy and paste?
He changes the vote, Anthony.
What's that?
Is Anthony changing his vote?
I was going to vote for no.
So again, I declare that carried. That puts us into closed session.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mister Mayor.